Okay, it is six thirty-two. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Landale City Council to order. I'm gonna ask our Madam City Clerk to give the roll call.
Okay. Good evening. Mayor Protem Hoffman-Gorman.
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas.
Here.
Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Kearney.
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Flag salute will be conducted by Councilwoman Bernice Suarez. And we're gonna ask Pastor Dwight Dooley from Cavalry Chapel of South Bay to give us a word of inspiration.
Please stand. Everybody can remove their hats, right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Mayor, it's always a pleasure to be here. And nineteen oh-six, huh, that's when this city was actually beginning to become the city of Landale. And what I found is that it says that it's the heart of the South Bay. I truly believe that. I think that this is awesome. But congratulations to you. I believe we'll see you in November on the ballot. This is what the Lord has to say. He says, "And Daniel answered and said, 'Bless be the name of God forever and ever, for wisdom and might are his.' And he changes the times and the seasons; he removes kings and he sets up kings. He gives wisdom to the wise; he gives knowledge to the knowledgeable, and understanding to those who have understanding." And when I see this wonderful council, I see a council full of wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. I think God has truly blessed you, Pat, my vet brother. I love you. "And so he revealeth the deep secrets of the things: he knows what is in the darkness, and the light dwells with him." "I thank thee and praise thee, O thou God, of my fathers, who hast given me wisdom and might, and hast made known unto this council all that he desires for the city of Landale and the other surrounding cities. I pray they follow your lead." Father, I thank you for these who serve in this great city, the city of Landale. Father, we pray that as you have given vision, wisdom, knowledge, understanding, Father, that as they are those whom you have called to be here, because they are those that hear from you. And I pray, Father, that you'll show them exactly what your will, your desire, and where you want this city to be in the following years to come. From nineteen oh-six to where it is today, it's come a long ways. And I thank you, Father, because these men and women of this council, of the city of Landale, have poured their hearts and their desires for a better tomorrow into this community. I pray for your blessings and the moving of the Spirit on them. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, amen.
Love you all.
Thank you, Pastor Dooley, for those wonderful words of inspiration. Thank you for being here once again. Let's move our agenda. On item number one, we have an update on the draft. Not the draft, but the drought situation. Let's hear from Edwin DeLeon, Water Use Efficiency Manager from Golden State Water. Ms. DeLeon, welcome.
Because I'm technologically challenged. Okay, forward, reverse. Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members and Staff. Golden State Water Company would like to thank you and the city of Landale for this opportunity to give you a brief drought update. I will be covering current conditions, Golden State Water Company Schedule fourteen point one, and how the current conditions in Schedule fourteen point one impact Golden State Water Company customers and the city of Landale. Current conditions: On January fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, the State Water Resources Control Board adopted an emergency regulation prohibiting certain wasteful water use practices. On January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, the emergency regulations went into effect and will remain in effect for one year from the effective date unless the State Water Board modifies it, re-adopts it, or ends it before then. State law prohibits wasting potable water. That includes closing off sidewalks, driveways, and hardscapes, washing a motor vehicle with a hose that does not have a positive shut-off nozzle, operating a fountain or decorative water feature without a recirculating system, wasting water outdoors on landscape within forty-eight hours of measurable rain, or in a manner that causes runoff. Using potable water to irrigate ornamental or non-functional turf is also not wanted. On March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, Governor Newsom, his executive order N seven twenty-two called for the State Water Resources Control Board to adopt more stringent water conservation regulation by May twenty-fifth. In May two thousand and twenty-two, the State Water Resources Control Board adopted regulations to require urban water suppliers to implement Level Two water shortage response actions. On May twenty-seventh, Golden State Water Company filed an advice letter with the California Public Utilities Commission seeking approval to move to Stage Two of our water shortage contingency plans. All of Golden State Water's systems are in Stage Two, effective June twenty-sixth. As you can see on the right in the drought map of July fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, we're in severe drought, so it's kinda hard. It's on the bottom portion adjacent to the islands, Catalina there. In looking at Landale's source of supply, water delivered to customers in the Southwest system, which Landale is a part of, is a blend of groundwater pumped from the West and Central Coast groundwater basins and imported water from the Colorado River Aqueduct and State Water Project. Imported and distributed, the waters that we get from these two areas are through the Metropolitan Water District. What drought actions has Golden State Water Company taken? Golden State Water Company's Water Shortage Contingency Plan, Schedule fourteen point one, was proactively implemented in August two thousand and twenty-one and has well-positioned Golden State Water Company customers in reducing demand during the current drought. Golden State Water Company issued a Tier Two advice letter to move to Stage Two on all other water systems, effective June twenty-sixth. Stage Two requires a mandatory twenty percent water reduction compared to the same monthly period in two thousand and twenty. For the week ending July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, which is from June first through July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, the cumulative water savings for the Southwest system was seven percent savings. Stage Two limits outdoor watering, and customers are limited to watering two days per week. Addresses ending in even numbers are allowed to water Sunday and Wednesday, and addresses ending in odd numbers are allowed to water Tuesday and Saturday. Golden State Water provides drought and conservation information on Golden State Water Company's GSW or gswater.com website. Customers can find information on the drought, Schedule fourteen point one, outdoor water use efficiency tips, indoor water use efficiency tips, information on drought-tolerant landscaping, information on conservation rebates and programs, water conservation school, and links to additional resources. Customers can also follow Golden State Water Company on Facebook and Twitter. That would be @GoldenStateH2O. And on GSWC's website, gswater.com/southwest for the latest news and updates. Additional contact information is at the bottom of the slide. Thank you. I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any questions? Yes, Mayor.
Sorry. I have been asked by a couple of citizens, the conservation, the twenty percent we're supposed to, you know, save, it's a little hard during this month and next month because the kids are home from school. Is there a grace period before you start charging the, I think it's a dollar twenty-five or twenty, that fee if they go over the percentage?
Currently, it's statewide from Governor Newsom for the twenty percent. We're not charging surcharges right now.
Okay. So if they go over, let's say they would have-
If they go over their allocation for the twenty percent savings right now, they're not gonna be charged the additional surcharge.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have a point of clarification. I don't know if this is true or false, but I'm told that there's enough water, plenty of water actually, in the basin. In particular, I guess, the water rights, if I'm saying it correctly, from Golden State. So I know this is a state mandate, so I'm wondering, why is it that that applies statewide if, in fact, there is a sufficient amount of water in the West Basin for which we get most of our water? I know you also said the State Water Project.
I understand.
Yeah. So can you speak to that?
Primarily it's statewide because Governor Newsom implemented that restriction. It's not Golden State calling for the restriction. We did initially implement voluntary conservation. We asked customers to reduce ten percent because we were in the third year of drought. So when that came down, we had to implement that and move into Stage Two. So I understand that there may be additional groundwater. We have other areas, like in Calipatria, where they don't have a shortage of water. There's enough water, but they're still being asked also to reduce twenty percent.
Okay.
Can that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I think the thing to walk away with in summary is the two days for which you are, one is allowed to water.
Correct.
Which, once again, the even days, even numbers. Addresses ending in even numbers will be Sunday and Wednesdays, and odd numbers will be Tuesdays and Saturdays.
Correct.
I guess that's the main takeaway, takeaway there. Okay, if there's not any additional questions, I wanna thank you for your report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move our agenda to our public safety report. We'll hear from our acting captain.
Good evening, everyone. Monica Patel here, acting captain at South LA Station. Hope everyone is okay. Okay. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for June twenty-second through July eighteen. So, two incidents of note for you. On July twelfth, at approximately zero four hundred hours, Deputy Stanley Dominguez conducted a traffic stop at Artesia Boulevard and Prairie Avenue regarding traffic code or vehicle code violations. The driver at the time did not possess a valid driver's license. His vehicle was subsequently searched, incident to arrest, and a loaded firearm was discovered. This suspect was arrested and booked at South LA Station for possession of a firearm inside the vehicle. And as a side note to that, just so you know, I actually conducted separate statistics for a gun arrest for Landale. And year-to-date, this is your eighteenth firearm that has been recovered from Landale. On July seventeenth, at approximately zero seven hundred hours, Deputy Gomez conducted a traffic stop near forty-one twenty-four Manhattan Beach Boulevard regarding vehicle code violations. The suspect was unable to provide a driver's license and consented to a search of the vehicle. During the consent search of the vehicle, the deputy saw the driver's window, the door window was shattered. The vehicle's ignition box was disassembled and appeared to have been tampered with. In addition, the key used to turn the vehicle's engine did not unlock any of the doors in the car or for the car. It looks like the deputy went ahead and inserted some other object he had in hand, and he realized that that particular, his object that he was using could actually turn on the ignition. So at this point, he was assessing and determining that basically any key would have turned that car on. Under Miranda, the suspect stated the vehicle had belonged to her and purchased it from OfferUp. They attempted to contact the seller to determine if, in fact, this was a legitimate sale or find some other proof of purchase. And it turned out that although the suspect indicated it was hers, a vehicle inquiry of that license plate and the vehicle returned that it was not registered to her. Based on that, the deputy went ahead and arrested the individual for driving a vehicle without the owner's consent. So at this point, that concludes my public safety report for the week, the dates I indicated. Were there any questions? I'd be happy to entertain them.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions, isn't there?
I asked one of my kudos to Sergeant Osborne and his deputies on Saturday. I reported a homeless individual that went between two houses. And I don't know if he's gonna make home there, use the bathroom, or whatever. And I called Sergeant Osborne at home. He got the deputies out there within five minutes. And come to find out, he had just, the homeless young man had just graduated Losinger four years ago. So kudos to Sergeant Osborne and his deputies on Saturday. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just to let you know as well, we're looking to identify homeless encampments within the city of Landale. So I'll be using Sergeant Osborne and the deputies to make that determination in the next week and a half or so, so that we can follow up with our internal team that we use with South LA to help assist us in dissembling some of those encampments. So we look forward to that and hope to help you there. Was there anything further? Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, Captain. Okay, let's have some oral communications. We're now, time for oral communication. This is when you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to do so, we ask that you line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, if you just come to the podium, if you would start with your name first, we would appreciate that. At about two minutes, the amber light will come on and give you the signal to start wrapping things up. You don't have two and a half minutes. The amber light will come on to ask you to start wrapping things up. And soon as the speaker before you conclude, you can just simply walk up to the podium if you're next in line. Yes, sir?
Gary Adams, forty-four-year resident of Landale. Several months ago, I brought to the attention of this esteemed body that there was a trip and fall hazard on the sidewalk on Manziel on the east side of the street that was created by the overweight trucks pulled in and out of the driveway by RJ Construction. That situation continues to exist and is gradually getting worse. If somebody falls there in this so happy society that we live in, it could easily cost the city a million dollars. Do you really wanna spend a million dollars to pay somebody for falling on something that should have been fixed six months ago? I don't think so. Anyway, that's what I came for. But I also listen, I couldn't hear well on this drought situation, but I would request that the city council consider its previous policy on not allowing rock yards. You know, the cities of Las Vegas and Phoenix will pay you to take out your yard and put in desert shrubbery and rock yards. And you can get rocks in any color you want. So if you want it to be green, you can get green rocks, if that's what it takes. But we could save a tremendous amount of water. It should be recognized that we live in a desert. This is not a new situation. It is worse now than it's ever been, probably in any of our lifetimes, and it's gonna get worse. So I think we should be looking at other things, including astroturf, which the city is also forbidden, according to my understanding. So I think we need to take a hard look at water that's being wasted. Personally, I'm not a golfer, so I just assume we did, wait with golf courses, too. I'm sure there'll be some kickback from that, but there's a tremendous amount of water wasted for golf courses as well. And then on the homeless encampment, since I heard about that, I would call attention to the city that on the north side of the four oh five freeway, north of Manhattan Beach Boulevard, Caltrans cleaned this out about two months ago. They had three or four dump trucks of stuff they pulled out of there. If you just stand on the sidewalk and look along there now, there's at least a dozen fifty-gallon plastic bags of trash that's already in there. The gate is in a sorry state of repair. Frequently illegally unlicensed vehicles are sitting adjacent to that gate with people sleeping in it. So I think we need some extra patrols. If you make it hard enough on people, they'll go someplace else. I mean, we're not gonna get rid of the problem, but we can make it move somewhere else. And I don't want it in my neighborhood. It is a safety hazard, and it's a health hazard, and it needs to be addressed. That's all I have.
Can you give us the address of that trip hazard you were speaking of?
It's-
You know that right off?
There is no physical address there. It is on the driveway on the north side of the RJ's property on Manziel Avenue on the east side of the street. There are cracks that are approaching two inches in width and an inch and a half deep.
One second, when you say on, you say, use the word "on" there, property, do you mean in the public right of way?
On the sidewalk. That is public right of way. It has been destroyed by their heavy trucks. And I was told previously that the city was going to take action to have RJ's fix it.
We have to make sure we have the right location. We'll have somebody take a look at it.
How long does it take, guys? All it takes is one person to trip on this. And I've walked across it myself, but I know it's there, and I'm paying attention. If you get some little old lady or old man older than me that's not paying attention, it's gonna be easy for somebody to fall there. And the city will have a significant lawsuit, and they will lose. Because you've been on notice now for at least six months that this needs to be fixed.
Got it. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, hi, everyone. My name is Cynthia. I came to the last meeting, so if you guys don't remember me, I'm referring to my property at one five six four one Menso. Still looking for an update on permits. Jared has created some additional items. We bought the house with the violation. We're looking to get them corrected. She added a bunch of things. And now neither her, nor Sean, nor the city attorney, you guys never, nobody have gone back to me as to why she's trying to make us knock down a quarter of the house. So I'm just here to figure out if you guys have an answer today and see what we're gonna do to bring up all the violations up to code, as we're intending to do so. In the last planning meeting, Jared fought for a vacant building that was creating a nuisance. What's the difference between that building and my home? My home is also vacant, and it's also waiting to get updated. So why is it that she's fighting for them, but she's giving us a hard time? So all it sounds like is like retaliation from them because we come to these meetings. I did mention already that we had signed contracts for tenants to move in August first. And now because of her and the illegitimate, and just everything going back and forth, even with the city attorney, that's not being helpful. We're still, those tenants that we have a signed contract for will not have a home on August first. We're in a housing crisis. We promised them that it'd be ready. It was more than enough time, and yet we're still in step one. We haven't even moved anywhere past Planning Department because she can't give me an answer as to why a quarter of the home needs to get knocked down. Regarding that Manziel thing the guy brought up, that is true because the house I just bought, I was walking by, and I told my husband, I was like, "Dang, they need to fix this." I said, "I almost tripped over this." So that is something you guys should address ASAP. And then additionally, the homeless problem, that is a problem. Every day, I have people walking up and down my block with carts. They're leaving shopping carts. They're homeless. They're looking at the homes. They're trying to take stuff. So that's another serious problem that needs to get taken care of. There's a lot of homeless on the undersky of Hawthorne Boulevard. I live nearby. I don't wanna see them there. I'm walking with my baby, and it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be in our city. I know that there's a housing crisis, but if you guys did your part and allowed people to move in, people into their places, we wouldn't be in such a horrible situation. So again, I'm asking that you guys look into it, you guys issue the permits. We're trying to legalize everything. We're waiting on you guys. So I'm waiting for an update from any one of you that can help point us in the right direction so we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
How's it going, guys? My name's Samuel Cruz. So I'm gonna elaborate a little bit more on what Cynthia spoke about. That's my wife. So we're here again, still the same situation that we were in last month. Sean Moore has made it his mission by just assigning us over to the attorney for no reason. So I haven't filed no charges against the city of Landale, and I don't plan to. Also, the city attorney doesn't even know why they're being spoken to or getting brought in. It's more of an issue to the city attorney. It's delaying our project furthermore, and it's, like Cynthia said, we have a tenant moving in, or is supposed to be moving in, on August first. That's not gonna happen because we can't move forward. Sean Moore is just wasting more of our city tax dollars by having an attorney handle this case for no reason. Again, he's wasting more tax dollars. I think going to better situations like fixing that sidewalk in Manziel or other issues that are around our city that need major updating. So we're wasting tax dollars on having an attorney speak to us, which the attorney has agreed that we've been in full compliance. Sean Moore has agreed that we've been in full compliance, and Jared has agreed that we have been in full compliance. And it's just, it's just a nuisance for us. It's just like, it's very stressful. It's a headache. We're dealing with this every single day. We're trying to figure out what can we do. And we're finally making enough noise that the mayor knew my name today. So that's a good sign. He knew my name. I also went down to the city hall today to register to run for city council. Cynthia, the one, I believe she's the clerk. So when I went to register, there is no paperwork available. There's nothing. As soon as I mentioned that, I'm gonna bring it up in today's meeting, all of a sudden, they're finding paperwork, and this is stuff that's been posted for a while. You guys have it posted on your guys' bulletin board. You guys have it, you guys sent, she sent out a notice on Nextdoor a few weeks ago, letting everyone know, "Hey, come register. Come to the date." First one to come register, she said, "Oh, people already took all the pamphlets." I said, "Come on. Like, who came and took this many pamphlets today? No one is showing any interest in our city." So I know that was a lie. So like I said, once I made some noise, all of a sudden, the paperwork's getting done. They're able to verify who I am, and it's just another stunt in Sean Moore's and Jared's agenda to stop us from, sort of stop me from running for city council. You guys actually have fueled me to run for city council and make great changes over here. So I'm hoping that I do get elected. Again, my name's Samuel Cruz, and I'll be running for city council membership. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Waiting for the amber light. What should I talk?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Anyway, my name is Juan Carlos Alvarado. I live in one five five two one Prairie Avenue. The reason that I'm here is because we've lived there for over forty years. And we've been having problems because, you know, we love to have a school in the back, which is Rogers and Anderson. But anyway, they built this school so high that it has flooded the living room in my house. So I've been coming here, going to the city, the public works, for forty years, and they have never taken care of the thing. The only thing that they're providing me with is sandbags, okay? And just recently, like last week, it's, look how sunny it is, how bright and warm it is. And one of the sprinklers blew out in there, and it flooded several houses in the area and even our backyards. I got pictures in here if you guys wanna see them. And what I wanna do is try to get between the public works or the school system because they keep blaming each other, saying that, "Oh, no, it's not us. It's you." So we're doing you a favor. We just bring you sandbags. And that's all they've been doing for forty years. I'm sick. I'm tired of that. My parents are very old, and they cannot be there in the water because they could fall off. And not only that, the house has actually sunk in because the amount of water that it has run down from the side of the house, that the floors, they, you know, had to get somebody to refill them in order to level it up. And then the front of the house, the street is built, you know, they created a thing like this so the water always stores in front of my house. So the drainage that I build, it doesn't work because there's water in the front of the house, too. And it just happened just last week again where all the water was there. I mean, the sprinklers, we're trying to save water. And here we go, thousands of gallons of water wasted in there, and I have it here in pictures. And I just want something to be done because I'm done. The only thing it takes is for them to build just a little, I mean, they don't have to build a big wall. Just a little lift over the thing so the water doesn't overflow into our place. So that way, the drainage will work properly because they don't clean the, I mean, they're not cleaning, not even the thing. They're coming now, but there is every time, you know, I get mad. And I'm tired. You know, I told them, "If you guys don't do anything, I may have to use a lawyer to talk to these guys over here," because it is ridiculous. I mean, forty years. My father died, and to this day, he was up there in the rain with boots trying to pump that water out of there. We have five water pumps in the house. It's ridiculous. And it's the only house, and nothing gets taken care of. The previous guy, whose name was Kevin, the- huh, the, the, what do you call this engineer? He promised he was gonna fix it and now he quit.
Time is expired.
He was trying to fix the front of the, of the, of the house. So there's, there's no one to repair now. I want to talk to the guy, the, the interim that you have as a, as an engineer. And he told me, "Oh, there's nothing that we could do. It's the school." Then I go to the school. "Oh, no, it's them."
Give me your, give me your name again. Uh, we'll get the departments together, see if we can help you out. I'm, I'm sorry, I was, I'm sorry.
You can call me J.C. Juan Carlos, if it's too long.
Juan Carlos, okay, Alvarado. Okay, great.
And, and imagine forty years of this.
Okay, we'll provide some, some comments after everyone had a chance to speak.
And if you want pictures, here's, here's, I'll leave you some proof.
Okay. You live on Freeman?
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Young, young man, Juan, Juan Carlos. You live on Freeman?
No, no, I live on Prairie Avenue. Right on Prairie. Right, right, right behind, uh, 711, Manhattan Beach and 154. Right in that area.
So you live next to the, you said you had a three-story building. Talking about the gym?
No, 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 there's no gym. I didn't say anything about a gym.
Well, what three, did you say a three-story building you're buying?
No.
Okay, okay.
Not at all.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get the departments together and see if we can figure it out.
If you could, if you could take care, I mean.
Okay.
I learned how to fix things, but I, I, I mean, that's something that is, has to be done by you guys. I mean, if he doesn't, if he cannot think, I can help him out. Think about it.
Okay, okay. Let us take a look at it. Thank you, sir.
And then the other, one little quick thing.
Okay. Ten seconds.
I'm sorry, if you could get the police officers to stop blinking at the cars like at nighttime, like you're driving the opposite direction and they just like light you up. Like, I go wash my car at eleven o'clock at night and all of a sudden I get a big flash from, from their cars.
Okay, we appreciate that. Thank you.
I, I don't want to have glaucoma. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Blanca Stella. Um, I'm gonna speak in behalf of my friend Esperanza and Augusto Gallo. They live in 165th Street and they have a big issue with their, uh, next door, next door neighbor. Because I play music so loud all day, all night. They call the police often, but, um, as soon as the police leaves, they, he raises the volume of the music. They, they have, uh, he has also a dog that barks all the time and a motorcycle. And they said that he had an issue with the police once because he fired, uh, his gun. And he was arrested only for one day. Uh, but, uh, there's no, you know, there's no, uh, way that they're gonna have a solution for this. And that's why they come to you to see if there's a, there's a way that they can, uh, get a solution to this problem because they can't rest, you know, they go to work and they're tired all the time. And it's been already like two years and a half they have this issue going. And the city just said that they don't have regulations over noise of dogs or motorcycles, music. So he, he's, he's, and they said that right now he's playing the music loud. So that happens until three o'clock, four o'clock. There's no time limit. So they're getting physically and mentally sick because of this issue. And he, uh, they have recordings of all this noise and they have a log of all the times that they called the police. In case, in case you need to have any proof of that.
Okay. We'll, we'll make some comments after everyone had a chance to speak. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening.
Hello.
The council manager's system of government was developed in an effort to avoid corruption and inefficiency and its purpose to enhance the quality of life for all Californians. While appointing a manager serving at the pleasure of the council, the council retains sole authority to enact local laws, make policy decisions, adopt a budget and provide general direction to the manager. And more importantly, they are responsible for providing police services paid for by residents. Each year the council cowardly councils meetings after the fourth to shield themselves from resident complaints. This year in order to protect their self-interest with fireworks and booth groups, the council decided that the laws enacted to qualify and regulate the activities that booth holders could be suspended and not enforce. This comes on the heels of not bothering to audit these organizations pursuant to laws enacted by the city. When all the groups were audited, four of the groups failed the audit. It is failure to govern or corruption. There's a law to claim year after year that the city needs fireworks to fund youth activities when audits viewed by residents, not council members, prove this is otherwise. The only thing being funded by fireworks in the organizations are election campaigns. Each year Longdale has difficulty funding funds for enforcement on the fourth. Isn't it time to put a stop to fireworks? Longdale is allowing the sale of a product banned in most of the surrounding cities. Is it not aiding and abetting a crime by allowing non-residents to purchase fireworks for use in their cities? Does this make a city culpable of negligence, hidden injury or fire occur? I've been attending council meetings for over a decade and we challenge to find any council member who has placed any significant items under their names on the agenda that enhances the quality of life for Longdaleans. This is, there is much self-interest in the Fourth of July is a prime example. Regardless of how many times I come and provide statistics on the carcinogens viewed in the air by both legal and illegal fireworks, no action has been taken by this council. No one has ever considered how fast-moving fires started by falling embers could destroy homes and lives. The council has sole authority to provide enforcement and ban all fireworks. If you can control what I planted in my yard, you can ban explosives or carcinogens. Fortunately, this is an election year with three members of this body up for reelection. Perhaps if residents were aware of the substantial compensation package they receive, we've had more competition for these council seats to attract individuals more willing to enhance the quality of life for all Longdaleans than just a handful. Last year's budget showed a package of about twenty thousand per year for elected officials with salary and benefits, including retirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Unfortunately, say it again, last part again? Uh, depending on what it is when we get to that item.
Okay.
Yeah, let's, let's take a look at that when we get to that item. But thank you for your, your comments. I want to thank everyone who made comments tonight. Let's bring up to the dial to see if there is any comments from the council. Let's start with Councilman Kearney.
All right, well, I'll just speak on three things. I'm gonna thank everybody that spoke tonight. The first one, Gary, maybe Public Works or shall we check into the sidewalk on that?
Uh, Public Works already has. They're working on mitigating that issue because it's on the, it's also on the RJ site too where it's dropped down. So that we would need RJ's to comply with updating their property site and then upgrading that. But I know Julian's talked to them about that.
All right, then Juan Carlos with the school problem?
Juan Carlos, we've staffed been engaging Mr. Carlos.
Okay.
Um, that, they're working with him. Julian informed me last week. It's an ongoing issue between the school issue, because it's school property, and the runoff is coming from, I guess the school district has been forwarding them over to us.
Yeah.
But as the council knows, that's really school district property.
Yes.
And it's happening on the side that's maintained by the school.
Okay.
So, and that area under our agreements. But, uh, Julian Restassure has been working with them. I guess Kevin, he did leave. He's since gone and Julian has met with, is setting up meetings with that gentleman, Mr. Carlos.
Okay, then the young lady, they're speaking for the other young lady. Could, uh, Michael and Sergeant Osborne speak to them about the loud noise? And the last one, yeah, that's, that's all I have right now. So pass it on.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Suarez?
First of all, I would like to thank everybody that came out. Um, it's nice to see a lively crowd here tonight. Um, so I will start going through, um, to piggyback off of what Councilmember Kearney asked with regards to the sidewalk. Do we have an ETA? Because as I mentioned, it was a while since the initial, um, mention of it was brought up. So I just want to make sure that we're trying to, you know, get to a solution in a timely manner.
Um, Julian is working on that and assessing all of our sidewalks on the sidewalk program. Uh, the area that's damaged, we'd have to get with RJ's and then work out a mitigation plan to bring it, I can bring that back. We can update the council when we have more information. Or is it right now? I do know it's being reviewed.
So it's being reviewed, but we don't have ETAs too?
No.
Okay. That, that would be good to know, just so that.
Unfortunately, Mr. Lee's not here today.
Okay. And then, um, you know, there, obviously we have, um, two individuals talking about their private, um, property. Um, and so I just want to understand at this point, it seems like, um, just to provide some clarity and, and I know it's only as much as, you know, it's, if it's an ongoing case, we usually don't speak on it. But I, I guess I'm trying to understand at this point, have conditions been sent and which party is leading or which party?
Um, Councilwoman Suarez, if I may, um, we have been working with the applicant. We actually went ahead and conditionally approved him from community development and immediately sent him over to the Building and Safety Department. He is now with the Building and Safety. So Building and Safety did, um, require some corrections. And I believe today the applicant told me that he did resubmit to, to Building and Safety. So I actually went ahead and contacted our plant checker to, uh, so he could take a look at, uh, the plants and get him moving forward.
Okay. And is there any way, I mean, we're kind of past the midway point in Ju, in July. So, and, you know, is there, is it possible to have that corrected by their, uh, August 1st tenant move-in date? Or it's just too early to tell at this point?
It would be possible. They would just need to address some of the corrections that, um, planning required as part of their, um, plant check. Uh, and to answer the applicant's question that they're having on why we brought up these other code enforcement, uh, issues is because once the code enforcement, uh, officer goes out there, he only addresses what he sees. And that's what the plant check is for, so site plan review. We take a look at everything else that, um, is not visible to, to the eye. So we cross-reference all the Building and Safety permits from back into nineteen twenties and make sure that everything's up to code. So that's why we brought up other items, um, for them to, to correct.
Okay. And then, um, so moving on from that one, I did want to bring up another point, which was the, um, the problem with, um, the homeless situation we're encountering. Um, just to let everyone know, um, Councilmember Cuevas and I, we're both on the Homeless Solutions Subcommittee. Uh, we've been having more and more talks with other agencies that can hopefully provide some assistance with our city. We are pretty small, so it is kind of hard to address, um, it solely within our own, um, employees. So what we're doing is we're talking to other organizations that hopefully can provide more outreach services. Um, you know, we, we just had a meeting, which I was gonna put later on, and so we've, have been talking to a few people. We're supposed to meet with PATH who, um, we have reps from, from that organization that have specific reps assigned to the city. So we're supposed to meet with them soon. We're trying to get it on the books so that we can hopefully provide more outreach services. Um, and then, um, yeah, I totally agree. Can we please, um, try and help this resident with regards to the flooding? If there's anything within our power that we can do, if we need to call some of the school board members, you know, and, and talk to them about it? Happy to do that. Um, just want to make sure, um, to address that. And then also, um, with regards to the, the, um, the noise, um, because I, I do get sometimes that comment. And so I, I guess I'm curious to see what happens if someone complains on a noise. What's the follow-up and how do you regulate it if they're turning it off? And, and how do you, how do you, um, enforce it so that people are more likely to listen and not try and get away with it? You know, it's difficult. I know there's a lot of, um, you know, patrolling to do. There's only so much you can be at one point. But I'm kind of curious as to, um, a little bit of background information. Because I, I have heard that complaint here and there from other residents, not the same house. But, you know, how do you follow up and make sure people don't continue to behave in that manner? Um, with that, I'll pass it along.
Councilwoman Cuevas?
Um, thank you everybody for coming and speaking. Um, basically, Councilmember Suarez hit on every single thing that I have on my notes. Um, if we could, uh, work with Mr. and Mrs. Cruz on their property, that would be great to get them to rent the property in August. I know there's other things that city attorney and city manager are working on too. But it would be great if we could get them their permits. Also, um, the driveway at RJ, I did bring it up about two months ago. Um, and I thought that that was part of the fix that they had to do, uh, with the other items that were on, uh, on their list.
The one items were zoning-related items. This is on our public right-of-way. So the city needs to work with the applicant to address, come up with a fixed cost, evaluate it and determine what needs to be done. It's not part of the zoning violations related to the business license revocation.
Yeah, but I had asked for this.
Correct. We are looking, staff is looking into it, but it is a separate, we are looking into that.
Okay. Could we please see if we could do it this month and not wait until August if possible?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that.
Um, señora Blanca y Esperanza, tenemos que agarrar más información de cómo resolver los problemas de ruido. El departamento de sheriff sí puede ir cada vez que usted llama, pero necesitamos también ver qué podemos hacer para ayudarles a ustedes sobre el ruido. En cuanto tengamos más información, vamos a, va a trabajar el señor Michael con el sheriff department a ver qué, qué se puede hacer. Sorry, I went, uh, Spanish route so that Esperanza could understand me a little bit. And what I said is that, um, I was gonna ask Michael and the sheriff department to see what we could do in that, in that situation where, you know, the noise continues. Um, also, um, Juan Carlos, um, it's, it's.
Forty years.
Thank you for being in Longdale for forty years. But, uh, it's something that we need to work with the city, with the school district. Because we share the, the parks, but sometimes certain things belongs to the school district and certain things we handle. So we're gonna try to resolve it. Um, staff will, will look into it.
Okay, let me make, let me make sure I don't, so we can make sure we keep the property decorum. Make sure we don't encourage, um, dialogue, um, back and forth. That's usually breaking our protocol. A quick question here and there, yes, but we want to make sure we continue our decor. Here. But thank you. Continue, um.
And regarding the homeless, like Bernadette said, um, we are trying to work with PATH um, to see what we could do to resolve the issue. Um, we are a small city, so our resources are not as big as other cities. But we are working to get that resolved. Um, it's, it's not gonna happen overnight. It's gonna take a little bit of time, but we are working on that. Um, and with that, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Hoffman-Gorman?
Thank you to everyone that came out today to speak. I appreciate every single one of you and the issues that we're all facing. I think Councilwoman Suarez and Councilwoman Cuevas hit about everything. The only thing I would bring up is to the two ladies is finding out if the neighbor that's causing a problem is a renter or a homeowner. That maybe there might be something there that they, um...
Yeah, let's not try to engage.
That's my, my only question that I would add on to yours is, you know, ultimately it's the homeowner that's responsible. And so that was my line of thinking when, when I added that. And other than that, I think I'm good.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank everyone who, who provided some comments as well. I'm gonna make a few comments, not in any necessary order in terms of, um, um, importance. Um, it was mentioned about the AstroTurf. Um, I, I kind of have a, a new opinion on AstroTurf. Um, I think, um, back in the days, we were kind of reluctant, not reluctant, uh, but we did not really desire to have AstroTurf. And I'm not saying I'm a big proponent of AstroTurf, but I know we have new AstroTurf, um, now that allows for the rainwater to actually, um, go into the, um, the ground, um, instead of runoff or what have you. That was one of the issues with the, the old turf, as well as the old turf used to, um, um, heat up, um, a lot. And so you get a lot of greenhouse gases or what have you because it would heat up. Now, I'm told that this, the, the latest AstroTurf is, um, is, is more, um, conducive to replenishing the groundwater, what have you. So I would think that we should at least take a look at the AstroTurf, allowing a certain amount of AstroTurf in certain instances. I'm not saying, you know, you should have like a hundred percent AstroTurf in your yard or what have you. But some AstroTurf, um, I went throughout this whole, whole, um, basin, if, if you will, on a special project. And I've seen some great projects that... and I've seen some great projects that if you didn't know it was Astro turf, and I made it a point to kneel down and touch to see, and without actually doing that, I would've never known they had Astro turf, and, um, and these are some pretty upscale, you know, communities or what have you with, this, when I say upscale, meaning desirable landscape, you know, communities or what have you. So, I think we would do ourselves a service, at least, um, to take a look, um, loo- look at that. Um, concerned the, the homeless, um, Caltrans, um, yes, you see, um, um, encampments on Caltrans property, and Caltrans continue to, um, to abate those issues. Um, the Mayor Protem and I, we, we constantly meet with, um, Caltrans on this, on this particular issue, cleaning up their, their, um, their property, but it's one of those things, it's kind of like, um, as, for the lack of a better description, killing ants. Once you kill a couple of ants, it's a, a couple of hundreds just waiting, you know, to replace them, right? And so, you gotta constantly, you know, have the pesticides out, right? Um, because you got, um, people in line, basically, to take, you know, um, to take their place, but we've been working with Caltrans to clean up those properties, and they have been do- doing a great job. It's, it's just that, you know, that the, the, they're just, it's, it's just a, a lot of people that are, are homeless, um, and they find these Caltrans properties a little, um, desirable, because they're hidden and out of the way, um, so to speak, or what have you. So, we continue to work with Caltrans to, to make sure those encampments are, are abated. Um, we want to make sure that the homeless individuals get the services, um, that, that they need or what have you, but at the same time, we want to continue to, uh, abate, um, these, um, en- encampments, and everyone who has followed this council would know that we went to bat for, um, our city when it comes in terms of, um, homeless, um, um, encampments or what have you, um, to, well, to the point to where we was actually, um, criticized, uh, um, for, for so, but we stood our ground, because we understand that we cannot just, uh, allow the homeless, um, crisis to go unaddressed in our, our communities, and we have to address these homeless, um, you know, encampments and also give the services, um, that homeless individuals need a- at the same time. So, I just wanted to say that about the Caltrans property. Maceo, um, property, um, with the trip and fall, um, issue, we'll, we'll get that handled, um, just as soon as possible, so we spoke to that, um, issue. Um, I want to thank the, um, the Cruz, um, family for bringing up their issues. We've kind of debated that issue, and we're gonna get the permits as soon as we can, 'cause I, I too would like to see, of course, the, the, um, the renters, um, in as, as soon as possible, and all the other issues can work themselves out, um, but at least if we can get the renters in there, um, the tenants, I should say. I think that would be a good deal, because, you know, trust me, uh, we're, we're no strangers to the, 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 the issue of, um, how the short- shortage, so, so we spoke to that issue about the permits. Um, Juan Carlos, um, yes, we'll work with the school district, and, and I'll, I'll be glad to, to sit in any meeting with the school districts to, to see exactly, um, is it a city issue, is it a school, or issues? I can tell you now, if it's, if it's a school issue, of course, we can advocate for you, but if it's the school, um, issue, our hands are, are tied in terms of, um, making them do something that they otherwise would not do, but we can definitely be, um, your, your advocate, but we need to at least have the meeting to see exactly how we can work together to, to keep this from happening, and we want to do that, too. Now, I under- I understand, this is, this is my first time hearing about it, but, 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 but I can, I can appreciate that, and, um, I'll be willing to sit in on, um, any meeting to see, you know, who's responsible for, um, the flooding of your property and to work with you in that regard. The loud music, um, you know, we used to have, I think they ended their, their, um, contract, not their contract, but I think they might have went out of business, um, dispute resolution, um, organization that we would take these type of matters, um, to, 'cause these type of matters are usually, um, and, and my, my follow-up, of course, is gonna be about noise abatement with the code enforcement, but usually, we would, we would, um, recommend some type of, um, alternative dispute resolution, um, company to get the parties together, um, to see if they can come up with some type of resolution, because in this, these types of matters, um, even if it is, um, let's say they violated the noise ord- ordinance, code enforcement would actually have to, um, witness it, right? And if code enforcement comes, and, by the way, when the music, when the music gets up, music's up too loud, just because the music's up too loud, it does not necessarily make it a violation. If it's, if it's a prolonged period of time, yeah, but if code enforcement come and they turn the music down, then all of a sudden, now they're in compliance, right? And so, um, so that's kind of challenging for code enforcement. Maybe, um, uh, code enforcement director would want to, um, speak on that issue and how we can use code enforcement to abate the issue, since we no longer have the, the service for alternative dispute resolution. They went out of business or they, or something to that effect. You want, you want to address that real quick?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, yes, thank you. Um, yeah, I, I can meet with, uh, with the resident after the meeting, get her information, and we can call her in the morning. Uh, we may already have a case on that property. I, I can look it up, but it sounds like there was a number of issues, including the parking dog and other things, so we definitely want to look at that house and find out what she's talking about, what she's going through. So, yes, I can, I can address that, and, and as for the noise, if, if, if the incidents are occurring after staff is gone, then we would rely on the sheriff's department to kind of note it and let us, make us aware of it. But I can, I can speak with Sergeant Osborne about that after the meeting as well.
Okay. Is there a such thing as like the nuisance abatement? Like, let's say, for instance, if you come out and you hear, hear the music, it's too loud, how does that work?
Yeah, I mean, we would, we, we look for compliance in all things, you know, we don't want to just go out to sites. We want to get compliance, and let them know, hey, you're, you're causing a problem, like a disturbance for the neighborhood. If they continue to do it, then we would go to sites and get compliance, you know, that way.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll address that issue for the nuisance, um, uh, noise abatement, I should say. Last, I wanted to mention, uh, wrote a note, I just made a note of, um, um, about the fire, fireworks and youth activities and the desire to end fireworks. Um, yeah, all the, um, fire, um, um, not fireworks, but, um, the organizations that was awarded a, a, a fireworks stand, yes, they do have a, a mandate to, um, to provide, um, youth services, um, activities for youth services, um, to use those money for such, and of course, we'll be looking to make sure they're in compliance. I know in, in the past, we did have some organizations that were not quite in compliance or what have you, but as of last year, we made it a point to make sure that, that we have these audits, I guess that's every year, right after the, uh, right after the fourth, or shortly thereafter the fourth, to make sure that all those who are awarded, um, fireworks stands are, um, in compliance, um, with, um, their requirements, um, their youth component requirements, whatever require, other requirements they have, um, lest they be disqualified from participating in the, the next year. So, let's continue on that. And with that, that's all that I have. So, we will close our communications and comments from the council, and we are now on item G. This is a consent calendar. There are six items on the consent. Uh, is it six item? Yeah, item two through six, I should say, on the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning such?
I'll make the motion to accept the consent as written.
Okay, the motion's been made by Kearney that we accept that they will approve the consent calendar.
I have a quick question.
Quick question.
I was, I wasn't here for number five and six.
Mm-huh.
So, do I abstain or?
Whatever your pleasure. You can still vote on five and six, although you are not pleasant or present.
Present or not.
You're always pleasant.
Okay.
But are, are you abstaining, whatever your.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, so the motion's been made by, by Kearney.
Mm-huh.
That we approve the consent calendar. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Suarez says, um, second the, the motion. Madam City Clerk, will you please conduct the, um, vote on the consent calendar? Okay, I'm gonna push the button instead. That's why I need both you guys on the side of me to keep me, keep me straight.
All right, will the council please vote?
Okay, for the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, item number seven, administration of California state grant funds for a multi-use facility. Let's have the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council and the audience. I'll be quick tonight. Mr. Estes is off today, so this is a resolution accepting the state grant funds of four hundred thousand dollars for a multi-use facility. Um, the governor in two thousand, September two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-one, Governor Newsom approved a four million, four hundred, uh, four million dollar award to the city of Longdale in the, from the California state grant funds for a multi-use facility. The funding was, uh, appropriated by the state legislators, uh, passed per Senate Bill SB one seventy, as the council recalls. Today, we're before you is a project information packet that we, details where we need to submit. Staff needs to, uh, staff has completed that, required the PIP, as we commonly call it, wants to declare what the scope of the project will be. Um, right now, the project, you know, has been evolving somewhat, so it includes a teen, a teen center, uh, complex. Will be comprised of a combination of following elements, which will be determined by available funding. We have some little bit, we're not sure because of the cost, so it'd be the teen center, municipal services department, which would be the multipurpose and multi-story building with adjacent outdoor and first-level covered parking garage, a standalone teen center and/or an enclosed skate park as part of the whole component. The project, uh, is generally located to the north of the side of the city council chambers here. Um, what we're looking at is a, the project funding at this time. We have it sourced at four million, as I mentioned, as well as another one million, two, uh, twenty-five thousand from the Los Angeles County Recreation Parks in Open Space District under Measure Eight, annual, annual allocations grant funding, for a total of five million, uh, twenty-five thousand available for the future, uh, potential use, and that's based on the enhancements of a hundred and seventy thousand a year, uh, beginning, uh, for fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four, and each year thereafter, estimated by Mr. Estes. So, today, essentially, what you have is an authorization, um, as attached, authorizing staff to move forward, so we can file, uh, as required with the state and get this resolution up. That concludes staff's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions we may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for their report. Are there any questions of the report? I do have just two, uh, just points of clarification. Um, you don't have to do anything about it, but teen center, most appropriate, uh, um, youth center, instead of teens, teen end at nineteen, but if you're twenty, our vision is that we will also have programs for, for, um, for, um, young youth, and the youth is probably, depending on whose definition, could be up to twenty-two or something like that, right? So, just a point of clarification there. Um, also, um, it did mention that the money was allocated from the governors, but at the request of former Assemblywoman Autumn Burke. Just wanted to make sure that that was part of the report, um, as well. Other than that, I think we're on the right road. Okay.
Are there any questions of the report?
Okay, Mr. City Manager, no, no further questions. That's your report. Okay. Okay.
Do we have the?
So, what are you looking for us to do on this? You looking for us to receive and file, or you need a motion?
Adopt the resolution.
Adopt the resolution, Mr. Mayor.
You want us to adopt this resolution? Okay, what?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, the motion's made by Suarez that we adopt the, the said resolution, and?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Hoffman-Gorman. Any discussion on the motion to adopt the resolution for the state, um, grant funds? Seeing none, will the council please vote on the motion to adopt the resolution?
For item number seven, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, thank you. Number seven. Okay, item eight, the League of California Cities Annual Conference.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Uh, real quick, we, uh, we need the council to designate a voting delegate and alternative to League of Cities, the, the expo, and it's gonna be held in Long Beach. Um, it's from September, uh, through, September seventh through ninth for two thousand twenty-two. Um, staff, uh, as, as, as the most recent delegate, al- alternatives are provided in the staff report, uh, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty, the numbers of the staff, uh, council members that were appointed as the alternative delegates. Uh, Councilwoman Cue- Cuevas, uh, as the delegate last year, the alternative was Councilmember Kearney. The following year was, uh, Councilmember Suarez, and then Council, uh, member, or Mayor Protem, uh, uh, Kearney. And then thereafter, two thousand nineteen, Councilmember Kearney, and then the mayor, uh, the mayor, uh, was the alternative. And then two thousand eighteen, Councilmember Osborne was the delegate, and then the alternate was, uh, Mayor Paul Miles. Staff today is, we have it allocated, the budget is there for the attendance for this, uh, League of Cities. Uh, there are no impacts to the budget, it's already been allocated. Staff recommends approval at this time. We're looking for direction to select a delegate and alternative.
Um, just a point of clarification, I think I saw it here, but you said is, that it was in the budget. It's in the budget for the, um, the delegate and the alternate?
Um, the travel, the city council travel and meetings account, and it's, and is budgeted for this fiscal year, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, for eighteen fifty for one voting delegate and one voting al- alternate to attend the full conference.
Okay, so that's.
If two or more council members wish to attend the conference, additional budget appropriations will be required.
Oh, okay, that's what, that was my question.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Okay, okay, that was my question. And then, um, okay, let's start with, who, who wants to, um, attend first?
I'll, I'll be attending this year.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Does that mean you want to be a delegate, or?
Well, yeah, if I could, same as last year.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just clarifying, you say you'll be attending, 'cause I'll be attending also, but I don't necessarily want to be a delegate, that's why I was just wanting to make sure it's, it's clear. So, you want to be a delegate?
Sure.
Anybody else?
I'll be here, second. Aldred.
Okay, so let's do this, let's appoint, without any, um, objections, let's, uh, appoint, um, Cuevas as the delegate and Kearney as the alternate delegate, and then anyone else who want to express interest in going, they can do so at a later, at a later date. They don't have to express that right now.
You don't have to, but if you know that you want to vote and express the interest now, direct staff to bring back the budget.
It's in the actions, Mr. Mayor.
I think I want to go, but I'm not exactly sure. Well, it's, it's always, it's always easier to undo than, than to do, so let's, uh, make a budget allocation for, for, for me to attend, and then I can decide.
A question? Would you want to be the alternate?
Yeah, so that gets kind of tricky.
Because I, I don't want to see us spending a lot of money.
Oh, you know, I could, I could.
You could be the alternate, I'll just back out of it.
Well, why don't we, I was gonna say, oh, you don't want to go?
Well, no, if you're going, you could be the alternate, I don't have need to go.
And the other thing I was gonna bring up is, there doesn't need to be allocation for the room and board, because it's in Long Beach, so.
In Long Beach.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, well, we, we.
Why don't you guys go, since I went last year?
No, we, we want you to go.
Just go ahead.
No, we want you to go. Well, let's just do, 'cause we have, we have time.
Yeah, we have.
Let's flip a coin.
Let's leave it as is. Let's leave, um, Cuevas as the delegate and you as the alternate delegate.
Okay.
And then we can.
Then we could always change it later.
Yeah, and figure it out later, 'cause we have time. When did we say that was? September?
September seventh.
Yeah, September, yeah, we got that.
Yeah, September, we have till September.
Okay, let's, let's do it that, that way.
Okay.
Okay, do you need a motion to ratify that, or is that?
You need to, there's an action, uh, select delegate and al- alternate to, uh, pre- represent the city, uh, action A.
Okay, sounds good.
And then you can also direct staff to come back at a later time for additional funding, if, if you like, or we can bring it back.
Yes, okay. All righty, so that'd be the order. Thank you. Item nine is school crossing guard services. Let's have the staff report.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, ready for item nine?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Uh, sorry about that, Mayor. Council, yeah, good evening, the school crossing guard program, uh, this items came, uh, came before the council a few months back. As directed, we're bringing the item back forward for reconsideration. Uh, I won't go into all the details, but there was recommendations from, uh, the direction to staff to bring back this item for consideration, um, with some alternatives for some, uh, concerns. The, right now, the city, uh, pays to have the crossing guards for the schools, and, uh, there's been some, um, um, questions about reducing some of the crossings. So, staff put together, looked at the intersections, we provided in the staff report on page two, the production count table, as requested by the council to look at. It's the same table that was presented a few months back. Uh, we provided the average crossing numbers, the, the concerning locations, and the, um, also, we provided some recommendation for the council. So, uh, staff recommends the following actions. We have several actions the council can consider. Uh, number one is make no changes to existing agreement for the crossing guards, if the council so desires. Number two, eliminate Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Prairie Avenue, Freeman Avenue and Marine Avenue, uh, what, um, and three, West one sixty-fourth Street and Hawthorne Boulevard from the list of crossing locations for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three academic year. And I might, I want to point out that we can, uh, based on our agreement with the crossing guard, uh, company, we can only reduce up to three intersections. Number three is eliminate, uh, Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Prairie Avenue, Freeman Avenue and Marine Avenue, for me, uh, for, uh, Freeman Avenue and Manhattan Beach Boulevard from the list of crossing locations. Or, uh, number four, eliminate Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Prairie, Freeman Avenue, Marine Avenue, Formona Avenue and Manhattan Beach Boulevard. Or number five, eliminate Manhattan, Manhattan Beach Boulevard, uh, Prairie Avenue, Freeman Avenue, Marine Avenue, and West one fifty-fourth and Osage from the list.
What if my list doesn't have what you're proposing?
You, you got, uh, the council can come up with an alternative list? If you guys, uh, so desire you think is important, it's up to the council. This is just based on comments from last time, and we put together the best actions.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have a question.
That's it, there's five, five?
Before we get into the options, I just wanted to get, um, because as far as I can remember, the locations that were originally, um, chosen, I could have swore that there were some kind of a survey done just to see which ones might be, need a crossing guard. And so my understanding was, my only concern, or I guess my concern would be liability, since the survey that was initiated, was, um, you know, kind of done informally. Is there any exposure for us? I mean, I guess that's just my
I, I know on the, in the staff report on page two, the one area of concern, that staff had concern with one, West one sixty-ninth Street and Hawthorne Boulevard is a very wide state highway, and it's a very, and it is a controlled intersection, but it is a difficult one for students to navigate. It is very challenging. I know that came up last time, that was the only one. I, I'd have to defer the legal side of the liability of that to the city attorney.
That was it. That, that was the, the one, um, item over which we, we had, uh, liability concerns. The rest, there would be notice, obviously, through this process, that an intersection would no longer be, um, uh, patrolled by a crossing guard, and so that notice going out to the community would, would not create a substantial risk of liability. I, I will just say this, in terms of how we move forward. If the council decides to take an action that is not one of the five listed here, my recommendation would be that you bring it back, uh, even on consent, just so that the residents would have noticed that the action taken, um, or, or, or that, I, I guess that, that the cross, that the intersection closest to them, which may not be listed in the agenda tonight, is under consideration to have a change in service. Um, and, and in light of that, even if the item is on consent for your vote, simply putting it on the agenda and letting the public know, I, I think is probably our best bet. And since we do have time, uh, that would be my recommendation, if you go differently from one of the five proposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on, um, this item? Counsel, for me, did you want to bring up an additional one?
No, actually, I just found it. I believe it's number three. I was going to suggest Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Prairie, which is number ten. Number nine, Freeman and Marine. And then number seven, Freeman Avenue and Manhattan Beach. But I think I found it on number three.
I see, number three, yeah. Okay. Okay.
May I interject?
Yes, yes, sir.
I like number five. Because, oh, um, one fifty-fourth and Osage is a surface street. And if you look how many people cross that, I believe it's children with parents. And it's, it is a signalized crosswalk there. I don't like to see Hawthorne and one sixty-ninth, that's, like you said, is a big one.
Yeah.
But I'd go with number five, if I was voting.
I would agree with Pat on that, if I, if I was eliminating, that's the one that I would favor as well.
Okay. Let me just, um, jog my memory as to, um, I know we had the, the five di- different options, but, why are we looking at these options again? Were, were we thinking that we had too many crossing guard locations, that some may not be, um, necessary? Is that?
Correct.
Correct, Mr. Mayor. And then, uh, staff, you had, you guys asked us to bring it back a few months back for reconsideration in July.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
And you can, we can only do up to three intersections per the agreement.
Oh, and the contract said we can do three. Okay, I get it.
Correct. Yes.
That, correct, that you could, that you're at ten intersections, you can go ten, nine, eight, or seven, uh, depending on, on what you decide.
Okay, got it.
Right, ten, nine, eight, or seven. You could remove one if you wanted, you can remove three if you want. You can remove two if you want, or you can leave the same. All, all of those options are yours. Uh, we can't go down to six or below.
Okay, got it.
And just note, Mr. Mayor, it's in your option one. We gave the council a plethora of options, we didn't box the end.
Make no changes, yes. But if we made, if, if we make no changes, would, would that mean we would be saying that all of these, um, intersection warrants having cross guard, crossing guards? Rather, either we're saying that, or we're saying that all of them don't warrant having crossing guards, but we're going to have them anyway.
You would be saying that, uh, you feel that those, the, that you don't want to make cuts to the crossing guards, and that you feel they're necessary, regardless, because that you feel what the council's position is, you want to protect public safety and the children.
See, now, that's a diplomatic, um, response. You're going to work for the State Department after this, I can see. Right? Okay, okay, I appreciate that, I just, but, I can see what was clear.
If we go with the decision tonight, can we find out how much savings will be on, if we did the three? And bring that back to the council? Say, we do five, one, two, three, or five, whatever it is. Can we see what the savings would be?
Yes, we can bring back an item and, uh, detail of the savings.
I think it's here.
It is in the fiscal, but we can, if the council so desires, we can bring up
Fourteen thousand, five sixty-five per crosswalk?
Yeah.
Yes.
My, my thing about removing one fifty-four and Osage, I know that the kids are crossing with the parents, but a lot of times, the parents are not paying attention. And I, I feel that, but based on the numbers that we were given, that is one of our top crossing stations.
Well, uh, Councilman, Cuevez, we can say that every street in the city of Longdale, crossing. Jane Adams has crosswalk and
But we're, are we a hundred percent sure that on one fifty-four and Osage, parents are crossing with kids?
Yes, I'm, I can
Are we standing there ourselves?
I stood there last year, and most of the mornings and afternoons, parents were crossing the kids. I know it's a big two schools, but parents are crossing the kids.
I, I still think we should keep that one and remove the Freeman and Manhattan.
Freeman and Manhattan, which number is that one?
Uh, number seven.
On this side, we said.
You take away Freeman and Manhattan Beach, that means your children have to go all the way down to Manhattan Beach and Prairie to cross, that's an externalized crosswalk.
But you're only having four point six, an average of four point six compared to an average of twenty-three, almost twenty-four percent, people crossing the street.
People, parents and children.
It's, it's a crossing guard, I mean,
It's money that
We can't say it's just for kids. When you have a crossing guard, yes, it's meant for kids, but it's also meant for the citizens. So if you have a senior citizen that needs to cross the street, they're going to use the cr- excuse me, the crosswalk. That's the way I see it.
I'm still saying one. Ten, nine, two.
Maybe we should
Say that again? Yeah, we can do, we can do
We could do that.
Well, uh, well, up to three, so we don't have to do three, yeah.
According to the staff report, uh, Mayor and Council, it's fourteen thousand, five hundred sixty, sixty-five dollars per crosswalk.
Right.
So if it was all three, it's, I did a rough estimate, it's about forty-three thousand, six ninety-five. So if you do two, a little less than that.
Well, because this is kind of new, I think we'd be okay with going with two routes. And then if we need to reevaluate, you know, it's still in the contract, right, to eliminate a third one if we want to. So maybe we go that, right, kind of in between, and see how it works out with less. And then, you know, if we're seeing that we need another one, you know, we go that route, so we kind of do it in stages.
Yeah. Because I guess it would, would be better to have, um, too much than
Than too little.
Too little.
Then I would do number nine and ten, which would be Freeman, Marine, Manhattan, Prairie.
Manhattan Prairie, that's, that's, on the other, on three of three, that's, that's two, item two, right? By item two, that's two.
It's number nine and number ten.
Yeah, but on this
If we're keeping only two.
But on this one, it'd be like it's item two, because that's Manhattan Beach and Prairie.
I think the council's agreement, you don't want to eliminate one sixty-ninth and Hawthorne, though.
No.
I'm okay with keeping that one for now. I'm just doing two. Yeah, so. I think we have a consensus, we can just do two for now, and we can always revisit it.
And then like Charlie's idea, number ten and number nine, let's eliminate those two. And then like Bernadette says, we can come back and we still have one to play with if we want to remove another one.
So Council Mayor, um, we're looking at Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Prairie and Freeman Avenue and Marine Avenue. And we might, this is action item two, we would remove, uh, West one sixty-ninth Street and Hawthorne Boulevard off that action.
Okay. Okay, a- any other discussion on that, removing item, um, what, ten and nine on the re- report? So we're removing two and revisiting at some point, if we need to, an additional one.
Yeah.
Everyone's good? Okay.
Is there vote needed?
So, yes.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yes, if we could do a vote, and, yes, it would, the, the, the motion would be to adopt staff recommendation number two, but to delete one sixty-ninth Street and Hawthorne from the list of items being removed. And then because it's directly out of here, and you're simply not removing one of them, we don't need to bring it back. We can do that tonight.
Right, okay. Okay, so it's item two, and then we're eliminating item five. Okay, who would like to make that?
I'll, I'll motion to do item two, removing, uh, one sixty-ninth and Hawthorne. Right, is that?
Like, item two, uh, without
Without, without
Right.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Okay, so that is, that is the, the motion. Who would like to second that motion? Okay, Hoffman-Gorman has seconded the motion. Okay, any discussion on the motion?
For administrative item number nine, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, item ten, community development permit, deposit-based fees. Let's have the report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Chavez is going to do a presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Council. Well, I'm, we're waiting for that, I'll, Mayor and Council, uh, this item's been requested by the council. When we adopted the two thousand eighteen fee update, way back in two thousand, one of the requirements was to bring back to the council an update on the, the deposits as we go. Uh, this covers eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one generally. Um, it gives you the detail of all the, all the deposits, and then refunds and staff time allocated towards those deposits.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, um, Council, the public. Today, I'm going to be talking about the community development deposit fees. So I'm going to start with talking about a little bit of a background of what has happened in the past few years. So in two thousand seventeen, council had, um, approved, uh, resolution to update the community development fees, because it had, they had not been updated since two thousand one. Before the update, the, the city would actually subsidize the cost of processing permits, uh, as requested from, in the community development department, um, by using general fund monies. In April fifth of two thousand twenty-one, the city council approved resolution number twenty-one oh four seventeen, um, and updated the community, the citywide fees as well as the community development fees. Um, in this, in two thousand twenty-one, a study was actually conducted, um, along with the finance department, to provide more of an updated analysis on what the current costs, uh, to provide fee-related services were, and compare them over to surrounding or similar cities. Um, the updated fee schedule from two thousand twenty-one, it actually allows the city to recover any costs for services for which they derive from, um, an individual's or entity's action request, um, meaning, um, uh, when they request for an addition or, um, an ADU, et cetera, so like a project. This is, um, a table, uh, that, that was put together by staff, showing what it cost for a site plan review in two thousand one versus two thousand eight and two thousand twenty-two. So in two thousand one, uh, they were initially a hundred dollars for residential site plan reviews, um, and they did not require full plans, uh, just, um, just a small sheet, and they basically, um, we had a lot of problems with people complying to actually meaning the code, because the plans were very, uh, minor and small, and they weren't actually addressing anything. And on top of that, um, the site plan review cost of a hundred dollars was not actually recovering, um, the, the work and the research the staff was doing to actually, um, enforce, uh, the code, or have the applicant, um, comply with the code. Uh, in two thousand eighteen, once the study was done by staff, and by taking a look at the cities surrounding, that were similar in cost, uh, in the South Bay and, and the area, uh, the fees were actually updated to a deposit-based fee. So as you can see, the ones with the asterisks were, um, deposit-based fees. In twen- two thousand one, most, all of the fees were just a flat fee. So, uh, for specific plan zone changes, there were flat fees. And then in two thousand eighteen, they were changed to deposit-based, because each project individually, um, was being reviewed and was different, and is different in, in essence. And again, in two thousand twenty-two, you can see, um, that the fees did change again, and that was based off of the consultant's results, one that they, ones that they, uh, put together the study and were able to compare the cities, um, along with the finance department. And these are some of the other permits that were also changed, again, uh, for appeals, land uses determinations, EIRs. They were mostly flat fees, that's, uh, reason why the city had to, um, subsidize most of the cost to review these projects from the general fund. And in two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty-two, uh, they were updated based on the market rate at that time. Uh, for site plan review, um, which is our, the community development department's, um, most, uh, used For site plan review, um, which is our, the community development department's, um, most, uh, used, uh, application. So most of the projects require a site plan review. Of course, there's some that don't require, um, a site plan review. But the ones that do, uh, 50% of these site plan reviews that are submitted, about plus or minus, are, um, code enforcement cases that, uh, the community calls and, you know, gives us, um, a complaint. So we send out code enforcement out there, and then they send us the, the case over to, uh, the community development department, and then we actually go ahead and investigate by using a site plan review that requires architectural plans. Um, and those are the ones that are not code enforcement related, which are, uh, remodels, um, additions, ADUs. Uh, 90% of them have been found to have code, uh, violations, which is why, um, I'm going to move into my next topic. ADUs are being processed separately. So in this, um, situation, since most of the, the plan checks that we do, we do, we end up finding a code violation, we don't want to delay ADUs because the state requires us, for us to approve it in 60 days. So since we have only a 60-day time limit, and we cannot hold them off based on any code violations that they have, we have to process them separately. And it has been, uh, known, and there's a history of any of the other site plan reviews that end up being a big code enforcement case, they have lasted one, two years. Because we've been working with the applicant, or the applicant doesn't want to comply, et cetera. So we have to expedite these ADUs, so we ask for another separate deposit. But, um, moving on to, um, the separate deposit, usually the, the applicant ends up getting, if you can see at the bottom, they get, they end up only paying about $869 for the site plan review, and they get all of the deposit back. So this is a list that I made, uh, I put together of the average, um, amount of what it costs based on the most, um, like, uh, common, I would say, projects that we process, um, so that you can take a look and have an idea of how much people are getting back based on the deposits. For accessory dwelling units, they usually just get charged about $869. And this was made, um, calculated on average, so what, uh, with all the projects that we already actually have refunded. So we put together a list from 2018 to 2021, 20, yeah, 2021, and all of the refunds that we actually have already given out to the public. And usually, as you can see on the top, major code enforcement cases take up most of the, of the deposits. And that's because they don't want to comply, or we have to send them to, uh, city attorney, or we have to go and work with code enforcement, et cetera. So that's another reason why it went from 1,800 to 2,500, because we were having to ask the applicants to submit another, uh, deposit to, in order for them to be able to cover, uh, the work that was doing, that staff was doing, uh, to address the issues. And then a standard code enforcement case of that would be kind of like, um, oh, they have a few, a couple of things that they need to change the site, the setback on, et cetera, or just that they don't, you know, it takes a little longer, but not too long. They usually only get charged about a thousand dollars. And then if it's a minor one where they say, okay, fine, I'll comply, I'll just demolish that structure, they usually end up just paying about $500 for that, and it's just like a quick turnaround time. For additions, this is about $1,500, new units, $1,600, and that's if they don't go to a special, special use permit where, um, they have to go to planning commission, so that would be a separate, um, deposit. And then, uh, for remodel, tenant improvement, about $1,600. And again, minor remodel, so they're going to remodel like just, uh, the kitchen, for example, or the bathroom. It's about a $500, uh, cost for the applicant. In this list, we put together, um, by year, what we actually collected from deposits, uh, the total amount of charges that we've actually, uh, charged the applicants and the amount that we have refunded, as well as the remaining balance. So the remaining balance here, you can see, uh, there's some funds still left in the, um, 2018, et cetera. That's because there are, some of these cases are still code enforcement and are still being worked on. Or people that have actually, um, not complied, and they just kind of abandoned the project, or they sold the property and they want to give it to the next person. So what staff did was, we contacted, um, applicants that had idle projects, and we sent a letter and said, hey, are you guys going to do anything with this project? If not, we could give you a refund. So, um, we have been working with, um, with finance and sending out refunds for people that either withdrew, withdrew on the project or closed out their project. So there is a little bit of a remaining balance, but mostly it's because it's an active project. Or some people that just didn't do anything with it and closed them out. So we're, we're still in, in the process of refunding a, a few, uh, more people, but we're working on that. So on the left-hand side, on the right-hand side, you're going to see the percentage of money that is left from what was initially charged. So, um, obviously 2022, we're still at 82%, but, uh, we've been getting a lot of site plan reviews, so, um, we're still working on, on those. But as you can see, we've been trying to keep making sure that everybody's getting the, their refunds. And just to talk a little bit about cost recovery. So this is just an example, um, prior to 2017, uh, site plan reviews were a hundred dollars. So if, uh, in 2018, the fees had not changed, we received 140 applications for just site plan reviews alone, which would have recovered $14,000. The cost of the labor for 2018, uh, which was called on the other chart, was $254,786. If we would have only charged the $100 flat fee, we only would have been able to recover $14,000, having to, uh, subsidize $24786 by, um, the money, the general plan money. Thanks to the new fees, we've actually been able to cover, to recover since 2018, um, 942, $473.30. And, uh, the deposit-based fees, again, is just an hourly, um, charge that we charge the applicant for whatever project they want to, uh, apply for, or if they have a code case and we're working on it, and, um, they call us, they come in, we meet with them, et cetera, all the time. Research and everything that is being worked on by, by staff, we will charge to the deposit. But at the end, everybody, uh, has money left. We, if they don't come back and, and ask for the deposit, we, we send out a letter, make sure that they remember that they have their money, and we will give them their deposit back. So it's just on a case-by-case basis, um, on what they would be paying. And that concludes, uh, the deposit portion of the, of this presentation.
Mayor, I, I would like to add, and council, just to reiterate, council-directed staff, Steve Mandoki was the city manager, when he came to me, when I came to the department, because Jared wasn't there yet. The department was head entering $13,500 on average to building and safety, and we were recouping zero, basically zero cost of site plans. People were resubmitting the site plans at a hundred dollars, there was no cost, uh, costing that out, it was just free. And then what happened was our, our budget, every year, Mr. Mandoki was asking us to go around to see where we could cut, and, but he asked me to right-size the department. Council had asked many times, had many meetings with Mr. Mandoki, who had asked department head to do, uh, update the fees. In 2018, we enacted the fees, they were updated, as Jared mentioned. That was the first beginning of the, of the process of the deposits. On average, people get a vast majority of their deposits back, um, especially on the entitlements, planning commission, council, they get those back. On the site plans, if they follow through and provide all the information, they usually turn it around right away. Um, on average, as Jared pointed out, it's about $14,000. Then last year, separate from community development, I wanted to point out that the finance department, again, Mr. Mandoki had directed, they, they initiated a whole citywide fee study. The department wasn't directly involved, they confirmed our 2017 and 18 fees, and also said they were a little too low, we had to up, up them a little bit to, for cost recovery. So I just want to bring that to your attention, that concludes staff's report.
Thank you for the staff report. Before we, uh, continue, let's see if there's anyone wanting to speak on this item. Yes, sir, come on, come, come on up and, um.
Is this unfair, so are, are you guys stating that you guys want to raise the fees?
No, we're not necessarily entertaining raising the fees, we're just getting a clear understanding of what the fees are and how we come to what they are.
So just based off my experience of, um, talking with a lot of the city of Longdale residents, the fees are already too high, um, it's deterring people from wanting to upgrade their homes. And this is a real issue, a lot of houses are outdated in the city of Longdale. And with the fees already what they are, you guys already see, uh, positive cash flow, and you guys are refunding, refunding them, why not knock the prices down to, to deter people to want to spend on their homes and beautify our city? That's all I have to say.
Right, thank, thank you, thank you for the input. Yes, yes, ma'am.
I do have, um, questions, because I want to go back to some of the slides. So we can stay on this one actually for now, because I just want to make sure I understand it when you're talking about subsidizing. So, um, so we're, we're talking staff time, right, and, and how much it, it costs? So those are budgeted for whether or not people submit site plans or not, right? I mean, there, or are we also talking about, I know we contract for.
We do vote, so vote the staff, that's a great question, I'm glad you asked. So building and safety are 100%, not in the city's general fund, 100%. The plan checker, the Roy Atani, um, Tim Chen, and Kumar are 100% paid for out of fees. They do not cost the city of Longdale a dollar. The community development planners, we set it up per the direction of the council. We made it 100, almost, uh, cost recovery. Jared, Raphael, when he was here, Chris Wilson, all the staff bill up to 75% of their time to deposits, almost virtually not impacting the city's general fund. This was the direction we received, we were doing cost recovery. The reason why we're doing this is because, as I just want to point out to the council, we're not like Gardena, we're not like Hawthorne. Hawthorne gets 14, they get on average, 14 to 12% on their property tax. Longdale gets .062. Manhattan Beach, yeah, they can subsidize their fees. They can, they have the money, they can subsidize, they have a full police department, fire, they can subsidize their fees. We can't, we don't have, we barely get a couple million dollars on rots there on our property tax. So we can't subsidize these fees. The develop, people, we put it on the developers and the property owners to pay, pay their way because we cannot afford to subsidize at a hundred-dollar site plan. I can't hire staff, we can't hire hogman staff, we can't pay, it, it is budgeted, but it's all paid for. And I was required, uh, remembered to the council, last year and the year before, community development was on an enterprise fund. It was not part of our budget last year, if you look, it was off the budget because we were almo- almost off the general fund. Some staff time is billed to the general fund, but the way council had directed, they wanted full cost recovery as much as we could to cover our costs for our time. So Jared's time, uh, Mr. Hernandez's time, they're billed to those hourly rates off those deposits based on the work.
Okay, and then my next, I, I have a question on the slide before, um, just so I'm understanding everything. It was a quick question. Uh, 2020, the deposit amount seems pretty low compared to the, the other, the other years. And from what I understand, um, so that was during the pandemic, is it because of developers, less of them were submitting site plans? Because I know home improvements apparently had, um, gone up, so I'm just kind of wondering what that fall was.
So, yes, so what happened in 2020, since we were close to the public, um, what happened is that a lot of people went ahead and did work without permits, and we didn't receive a lot of site plan review applications. And I believe at that time, we were also, I get, I think code enforcement was told to.
Yeah.
Basically, kind of stay back a little bit for a while, so we didn't really get site plans.
Okay, that makes sense. And, and then I just have a few comments I wanted to make, because I know we talk about staff time and all that. And I think for the most part, um, the way I see it is, and, and I too tend to agree. I, I think, I'm not so sure I'm sold on the deposit base, I think it's easier to work with a set amount. And if you can keep it, I think generally at the cost, I'm kind of okay with that, I don't know. I, I think you're just spending more time trying to figure out the billing, you know, cost of it when you're, when you're doing it that way. Um, and then the other thing is, what I also wanted to bring up, and I'm not sure of the process, I haven't submitted plans, you know, I, I live in a rental. So I guess my question is also, are there things that we can do that would reduce staff time? Can we do online, or is there a system that we can, you know, I don't know, these are answers I'm looking at where we can possibly, you know, may, are we doing everything manually? Like when we look at, uh, code enforcement cases, are we looking through a filing cabinet? Or is it something, you know, where the system, you can simply search and see? Because some of what is on there, I'm like, well, I don't know that that would take that much time to review. So I'm wondering if there's things we can do to cut staff time, if that's really the case. And that's kind of where I'm trying to look for a middle ground here, because, you know, I understand we didn't update fees for years and years and years, but what I'm trying to gauge is, um, you know, I don't want it to be also from looking at this, if someone comes and wants to do an improvement, and then it turns into, you know, you start getting people not wanting to because they're afraid all their other code, anything that's a violation is going to be brought up, and then they're going to have to deal with all of that. And so I want to go towards, uh, move in a direction where we encourage people to comply, but at the same time, you know, um, it, not also for it to be an alert for everything that you have wrong with your property, because I feel like that's going to just, next time people are just going to say, you know what, I'm just going to do it, um, you know, without getting a per, permit. If I get caught, I get caught, if not, then I save, you know, some money. So those are just my thoughts on it. Um, I, I would prefer to move toward maybe a more set fee, um, if we're refunding so much, and then kind of look at something that we can make the process maybe easier for people, um, if there's anything we can do.
Very good. Yes, ma'am.
I do agree with, uh, Bernadette, I would like to see more of a set fee. Based on the slide that you had previous to this, the one that said onsite, uh, plan review slide, that one. If you average all those, it's about $1,400, because you're refunding a lot of people after their work is done. And not only are you, you're also using the accounting team hours because they have to do all the refunds and all the processing. So if we could stream it, that would be great. If we could, let's say it's a $1,800 site plan permit. If they go over, then we, we should be able to charge them for the additional staff time, if that's what we're trying to cover. I do know that a lot of people nowadays do not have $2,500 in their pockets. And then six months from now, they're going to get maybe $2,000. You know, nowadays, a lot of our citizens, their pockets are tight. The same with a credit card, I could put a credit card, but I'm paying interest, and then by the time I pay it off, those interests are way up there. So I would like to see maybe a set fee based on an average of how long a site plan would cost to review. If it takes you, you know, let's say, five hours, then charge for that. And if it comes back, then we charge for the additional time. But I do think our numbers are a little too high for the current situation that we have. And people are building and making additions and things like that without permits because they rather get caught and deal with the circumstances at that time, because the funds are not there.
One other thing I did want to add, um, because it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, is that there's a lot of back and forth with additional requirements that people aren't catching, and I'm not quite sure why. Um, I'm wondering if there's something that we can do to maybe on the application, or maybe somehow, um, that people can, I mean, I, I know each circumstance is different, but I'm just wondering if we can eliminate the back and forth a little bit by providing maybe something a little more clear in, in directions or whatnot, or what have you. I'm, I'm not sure, I've never pulled, you know, a site plan, so I'm not sure. But I'm wondering, it sounds, from what I'm hearing, there's like, oh, here's this now that needs to look at, here's this. I'm wondering if there's stuff that we can catch upfront that would kind of eliminate the back and forth, um, and be more efficient.
So, um, just a comment regarding that, um, we try to help everybody at the counter before they submit anything. And regarding the code enforcement situation where they want to do a remodel, we kind of do a, look at their property and say, hey, you know, um, just a little warning, you might have to fix these violations. You might have to fix these violations. We remodel so and so. So we do tell them upfront and we do meet with them prior for them to submit. So we are cutting some staff time in there. We are doing now, after COVID, we decided to do online submittals. We can't take payments over the phone yet, but we're working on that with staff, trying to see a way we can take payments over the phone. But just, you know, to clarify one more thing, sometimes these issues become huge code enforcement cases. And there's no way for us to know that until they actually submit.
What percentage would you say have issues, additional issues? Is it like 80%, 90% or is it 20%?
It's about 90% of submittals have code violations.
And do we give them a checklist when they come to the counter? And say, once you have this on the checklist covered, then come back to us?
Yes. So I do tell them, since I've been by myself for quite some time, I do try to tell them to have completed plans before they submit. That way they don't have to spend that much on their deposit. And the best, like, we have an application with every single, like, item and detail that they need to submit. So what I do is I go ahead and check what I'm going to need depending on what it is that they're submitting. So sometimes they need elevation, sometimes they don't. So I will check those for them, sign it off, and then have them come back. Sometimes I'll look at them before they submit at the counter, say, hey, I mean, this might not be good enough. So you might want to add a little bit more. But yeah, we try to help people at the counter. That way they don't have to be billed as much.
And then one last thing. In an average, how long does a permit or a plan review take?
So that's kind of a hard question because it would depend. Let's say an ADU, I can give you an example of an ADU. That's probably going to take about the first submittal of three hours. Because if we have any corrections, we'll give them a correction letter. And then once they resubmit, maybe two more hours.
But does it take six months, seven months?
No, it takes about 10 business days. So that's our turnaround time. And there is an expedited fee that is offered to the applicant. So if they want to get it out quicker, we'll get it out within like two days. So and then when they resubmit, it's about two to five day resubmit, I mean, turnaround time.
And, sorry, I'm still going. You pointed out that in 2018, there's still refunds. Why are we still waiting to refund those people?
So those were just sent out, I'm sorry. What I meant to say, let me go back. There are, there's remaining balance, the remaining balance is of those that are still open. So some of these people were, we sent out letters and say, hey, you haven't done anything with your project. Are you going to keep going or not? So everything else that was closed out and was finished, we sent all the refunds for them. And these are still open projects.
Can we just close them, send the refund, and then if they do the work, reopen the case?
We can, but we don't know if they have the same address, which is why we sent the letter. So we can't just send the money back. So we just need a response from them, you know, so we can send the money to the correct place.
And that was done, how long ago?
A few months back. So we have been getting responses from some of them. So, but most of that money is, most of it is still open cases, most of it.
And then, sorry, I had one question I did forget because she spoke about processing times. Do we also, depending on whatever submitted, do we categorize them? And certain ones that are easier to do and faster, you know, so those get checked a little more frequently than like, say, I don't know, some, a site plan that's, you know, very complicated and we know it's going to take long?
Yeah. So we, when they come in, so as of, right now, we actually have a new planner since we're in the topic. But since, as they come in, they get, they get assigned to planners. And then based on the type of project, so for example, we have our consultant that's helping us. She's doing all the ADUs. And then right now, I'm doing all of the cases that are going to take longer. So she already knows that those are faster. And if somebody, you know, is in a hurry and saying, you guys are taking too long, I'll take that over and get it out as quick as possible. And for him, for the, Jose, our new planner, we, you know, we're teaching him kind of how everything works. But yeah, at this time, we are kind of gauging what's more, like a bigger project versus a smaller project and try to get it out as soon as possible. Of course, if it's something that's going to take longer, we take a little bit longer to review it within those 10 business days. But we still kind of go based off of the submittal, so who submitted first. It just depends. It just, we try to get it out, everything, within 10 business days.
Within 10 business, city business days?
Right.
Because we only work four days a week?
Right.
Okay.
Very good, very good. Anybody want to add anything else?
I just have a couple of observations. First, I just want to start with, I too believe that the fees seem to be too, too high in terms of the deposit. I understand the idea of having a flat, a flat fee for projects. But it stated in your report that some cities do have a flat fee for the projects, but that it is not fair for those who have minor projects or code cases that would only spend a small portion of the deposit versus those who have major projects or code cases, which use up most of the deposit. Can you expound on that, why a flat fee is not appropriate or fair?
Yeah. So a higher fee, so if it's just $2,500, somebody comes in and has to do a site plan review for just a bathroom remodel, and usually would have cost them $500. And then somebody comes in with a two-by-two dwelling unit project and they spend the whole money. They're basically subsidizing, though people who paid the $500 are subsidizing the other person's.
But it's, sorry.
Now, go ahead.
That's not fair to me that I'm fixing a $500 bathroom and Robert is doing a $3,500, you know, plan. I think it should be on a, if he passes the,
Square footage.
The square footage or the set fee, then we charge the per, Robert, let's say. Because like I said, people are building without permits and I'll just leave it at that. And if I get caught, I get caught. I'd rather, you know, pay it at that time than get it out of my pocket now.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I can answer a little bit of this.
Okay, go ahead.
So the problem, we did look at this. This was looked at, a minor SUP, a minor site plan review, a major, and a medium. We can't do it. We can't, we can't change the deposits because like Jared pointed out, we have people that do minor site plan review, they're in and out, like a demo. So it's done, they get, they get almost all their $2,500 back. The problem is then, then we get into the people that come with the two units and we have to spend all of our time. They have a demo. They want to do two units plus an ADU. So that, you know, that's a separate application, the ADU. So what happens is then the people that are, when we, if we went to a flat fee, they would go over most likely because we have to review the two-car garage for each unit, the open space, the private open space, the number of bedrooms, making sure they're not creating ADUs inside the units. There's a lot to it, architectural design, height, all of these things come into play. So it's really difficult. So we talked to our consultant about it. I mean, the site plan used to be at 1,800, 1,850. But they even said, the consultant confirmed that number was too low. And it was very difficult as we talked to the consultant because we thought about bifurcating that system and making a lesser fee. But the problem is, like Jared said, 90% of the sites that we get in site plans, they have code cases. They're never just a bathroom remodel. Almost 90% of them have illegal unit, not saying they did it, but historically someone added on a garage, an ADU. Almost everybody in the city has added on a washer and dryer because now things have changed. We don't have closed lines anymore. We don't hand wash. So we catch these things, we have to correct them. And we have no choice because they're violations of the building code. People, they could cause fires, like the apartment fire just recently, they did work without a permit. And the units, all those 50 units could have burned up. But luckily only one did and the other one was damaged from water. So these are very significant issues that we come across. They're never just, I wish they were just bathroom remodels, they're not. You go, you go across on the southeast side of the city and go down by Artesia, almost 20 homes there have illegal additions there along that alley. After one, after another, after another. I mean, it just happened over the years. Not because the city's done anything to hold them back, these people have added on without permits. And some of these are in the 50s. Some of them are in the 60s and 70s.
So, thank you for that. So is there a way that we can at least reduce the deposits to where they actually match our right size, if you will, the refunds? Because I noticed as you mentioned, there's a great deal of refunds. So to me, it just seems like if, if I'm more than likely going to get a substantial refund, right? Then why do I have to put up that amount of money in the first place? I mean, it's kind of like, for me, your tax refund. People believe when you have a tax refund, you get this big tax refund that you've got to bananas. But you basically overpaid, you know, your taxes. That's why it's called a refund, right? And some people, they don't know how to, as you go throughout the years, to adjust so that they can come out even or just owe a little bit or maybe they get a slight refund or what have you. But in this case, it's like you overpaid. It's one thing if you didn't know that you was overpaying. But it seemed like we should be able to tell by the numbers that, yeah, this is going to cost X amount of dollars in terms of cost recovery. Let's say, I'm just making up a number, let's say about $1,000, $1,000 bucks. But if we, the refund is $3,000, then why are we charging that much over what we should be able to kind of estimate how much it's going to cost? Now, if, I can see for some reason, it goes over. Then of course, then the applicant of course have to put in some additional funds or what have you if it goes over. But to have a substantial, and I know we don't want to go, keep going back and forth saying, yeah, you have a certain amount on deposit, we're about to exhaust that and so we're going to need a little bit more, you know, from you. And you don't want to keep going back. So I understand why you want to put some additional amount on and just like we have cost overruns when we have projects or what have you, right? That's kind of built in, you know, to the project, right? So that it's already kind of designated or approved, if you will, in the event that the cost overruns what we had estimated. So I understand that. But at the same time, if it's an exorbitant amount over, to me, that seems like it's not really fair for those who have to put out the money because their money could be doing something else for them, growing for them in the bank or somewhere.
And I'm, I'm looking at the residential, not at the commercial portion. The residential is the one that we should work with our citizens on. You're going to do a bathroom, okay, let's just, you know, put a number there. If you go over and we have to go in again, then there'll be additional fees. But let them know, you will have additional fees if for X reason we go in and inspect and there's code violations, then you will get additional fee. But to start the process, we shouldn't have to ask them for $2,500.
That was the fee study that was completed just last year that confirmed the costs. Those were, those are fee that the council approved. That it was a time and material study completed by an independent consultant of the city that confirmed 2018's, the 2018 time and material study. So if the council wants to look at going back and changing the fees, we'd have to bring back an item to amend that. But I just want to caution the council, then we will probably have to amend the budget too. So we'll have to go back and look at all of that too because of the way things are structured in the department. But that's totally up to the council.
The budget is based on the $2,500, not on the refund. Because if, if we're going to refund, if, let's say we are $225,000 and it's in our budget, but we are refunding 150, it's still coming out of the budget. So we should be doing an average of what we think and put it on the budget and that. And if I'm,
Well, we're, like I mentioned previous, that the department is where the staffing time for the department is paid out of those fees. And that's the cost the independent app, consulting came up. But if the council so desires, wants us to bring back an item and reduce, reduce that fee or make it a flat fee, we can do that. But then we'll also have to look at the budget and go back and look at those costs and what those impacts are to the department. But we can certainly do that if that's the desire of the council.
I'm okay with having that conversation at the very least and seeing if we can incentivize people to work with us. One of my concerns that I hear from various people is that it's so difficult to work with us. That's just a few comments. You know, most of the time, you're going to hear from people that complain. My fear is that, is it, you know, whether it's looking at the fees or looking at the processes, is there something we can do that would want, that would encourage people to work with us? Because what I don't want is for it to be too complicated and we're just trying to recover fees. And then maybe there's a business that looks at our city and another city for their place of business and they're like, ah, Longdale's a little too complicated. And then we lose out on the sales tax and other stuff. So I'm trying to look at it from a broader perspective of, you know, what we can gain from making our process easier.
Exactly.
So let me ask, Bernadette.
Yes, sir.
You're talking about blanket, commercial and residential or just residential?
I would like to take a look at both, just to kind of see if there's some stuff. It doesn't mean we're necessarily going to, but I think we need to start somewhere. You know, possibly, you know, and what I would probably do is I would like to sit with staff and kind of see what the process is for it. There's some stuff, you know, I agree that we can probably keep. But I'm interested just to kind of see, you know, before I make an informed decision. Maybe we start with residential first. How about that? And then, and then maybe, you know, later we can look at other stuff. But I would agree with Shirley, you know, let's start where people who are, you know, were, I think the last census, you know, was the average household income was $60,000. You know, so when you're talking about some of these fees, that's quite a lot out of that person depending on how many mouths they have to feed. So I guess I would start with residential.
And then also maybe we can like, Bernadette says streamline it because I know residents have to go to Jared's apartment and they send it over to Public Works to get a permit. I just see that streamlined. Maybe we can get somebody from Public Works once we get enough staff there to work in building with you. So they don't have to keep, people go back and forth wasting gas. Because the people I've talked to, that's the biggest complaint. I mean, the $2,500 is a big complaint. But the bigger, the biggest complaint is going back and forth to Public Works, to your counter, Public Works. If we can streamline that, you know, online or have somebody from Public Works work in your department, that'd be a lot simpler. I know the $2,500 is a big thing, but in our last report, if the council read it, there was 11, 12, 12 people that paid the $2,500 and to do a refund. I'm for it, whatever the council decides. But I know Robert and I, and I believe Bernadette, said on this council, when we made this decision, a year ago or two years ago, to raise these fees. Can I say, young man, can you turn your light off, please? Thank you. We made the decision, now we're going to go back on it. I have a problem with the $2,500, but if 12 people can pay it, you know, I understand what Shirley is saying about the credit card. But if you, I understand the high interest rate. But it has to be happy, like you said, happy to meet them somewhere. I don't want to see any money coming out of the general fund to pay for our staffing here either. It's like a standalone department.
And, and I will say, I'm not married to just reducing the fees. I think sometimes people are willing to pay if they know that it's going to be a really quick turnaround. Yeah. And sometimes that compensates for the fee.
Young lady wants to speak over here.
I see you take, Robert. I'll let you speak this time, but let's make aware that when we start the conversation, but when the council starts to deliberate, then that's really the end of the public discussion. Otherwise, we'll have back and forth. But I'll let you say, I'll give you one minute, ma'am.
Yeah. So like if you sit there and you compare some of the other places, we just, we just did a full remodel in Long Beach. You walked in, you pull a permit, it was $300. And they came out, they inspected, everything was good to go. We moved on to the second one, they did final inspection, we're good to go. It was fast and easy. We did three bathroom remodel in Hermosa Beach. It was like $800. Same thing, we did first, we paid it. And these people have apps. You go on the app, you pull the permit. You go on the app, you pull the permit and it's quick, it's easy. The inspector comes, you pull, you request inspection online and it's, it's easy, it's simple, it reduces people, you don't have to wait. And when the people are going on vacations, you don't have to wait for them. Everything's on the app and it's streamlined and it's ready to go. So we can do something, I can facilitate it that way. The fees are too high and then I think it's mostly just to keep, keep most of the people's money. But there's other ways and we just got to look into other ways of what we can do to do better, you know? Doing it manually isn't working and it's not working for a lot of people and people are not going to do it. If you, if you come in, you say, hey, I want to remodel my bathroom and then they're like, oh, you know what, you actually have to knock down this bedroom, you have to knock down your porch, you're going to have to knock down your garage, you're going to have to do X, Y, and Z. Nobody's going to come in and pull permits. We got to be able to work with people. Hey, we're going to do this. I get it, if it's like a really big, serious issue, yeah, let's address it. But for something that's fine and it's, we got to encourage development, we got to encourage people to come in and say, okay, let's, let's do better, let's, let's, you know, let's do, let's renovate our home, let's get the property values up because the city's going to make the money back, right? You get higher property taxes, higher property value equals more money for everybody else. So I think that you guys should really look into change, first of all, changing that. Twenty-five hundred is very discouraging to some people. And then two, streamlining it, we, we got it advanced, you know? We're in twenty-twenty-two, we're still doing everything manually, we're still filing stuff here. Everybody else has apps, you could do it online, request inspections online, everything's done online. Come on, what are we doing here?
Okay, thank you, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. So we took down a lot of notes. And I think we kind of have a consensus in terms of our right size, you know, reducing the, the fee deposit.
So we're going to bring this back?
Yes.
So we're not going to receive and file this, we're going to have, continue it, correct?
What, what we can do, you can receive and file it and we take direction and bring it back, bring another, bring the, I heard site plan review is the council's biggest concern.
Right.
So we'll bring it, if the council so desires, that's what I'm hearing consensus, we'll bring it back.
Yeah.
Just the, I'm hearing just site plan is the big one.
Yeah.
So you want to look at the site plan review application.
Okay.
No, no other fee, no other planning fees? I think that was the biggest one, was the site plan, is what I hear.
I think the site plan fees.
For, for residential to start and then later on, we can look at the commercial.
Okay.
We're on item ten, right? Is that item eleven? That's the, the one that deals with-
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Eleven is kind of the companion.
We're going, yes.
Okay, so that would be all on item ten, right?
Yes.
Okay. So let's move to item eleven, which is the companion. Kind of went into some of it, but let's have the, the official staff report for eleven, community development permit fees report, okay?
I can, so I'm going to go ahead and, and I'll talk about the community development department fees. This is a list of cities that was gathered from the twenty-seventeen and the twenty-twenty-one studies that were done for comparing similar cities in the South Bay to the community development department fees. The cities were Carson, Gardena, Manhattan Beach, Torrance and Redondo Beach. Some, these are, this is a chart, you can see the SUP special use permit, tentative track map, site plan review, fence and flatwork and landscaping on this chart. And as you can see, other cities have, for example, a ten thousand dollar site plan review, deposit-based fee. Gardena has a four thousand, six hundred fifty-six dollar site plan review deposit-based fee. Manhattan Beach, eight thousand, three hundred ninety-three. We're actually the lowest of all these cities. And then Torrance, five thousand, eight hundred fifty-four, and then Redondo Beach, the two thousand, eight hundred and forty. Going, moving to the right on the fence, I'm going to talk a little bit about that because I, I know it was requested in the past meeting, so I'm going to explain a little bit about the fence fees and flatwork and landscaping as well. So I'm going to start with special use permit. So a special use permit is, is a permit issued by the city authorizing a special use subject to conditions. So if a zone allows certain uses outright and then there's uses that are allowed with an approval of a special use permit. And in this case, those are uses that are more intense, that would require conditions to be put into this project in order for them to address issues that, that may impact the surrounding neighborhood. A special use permit is, has the same meaning as a conditional use permit as other cities use it. And this is on our zoning code. And before the study was conducted in twenty-twenty-one, most special use permits application within the city were exceeding the deposit fees and requiring applicants to submit additional deposits, which is why the fee was increased from five thousand deposit-based to eight thousand deposit-based. And just to know, the fee is deposit, it means that unused funds will be refunded to the applicant. So most special use permit applications are for commercial or apartments, mixed use, et cetera. This is a site plan review chart. Again, this were, this information was gathered from other cities of how much it typically costs for a site plan review application within the South Bay. And as you can see, the fees are pretty, pretty high and Longdale being one of the lowest fee, fees for site plan reviews. And these cities were used in the twenty-twenty-one and twenty-seventeen studies that were done regarding the site plan review fees for deposits. Fence permits, so fence permits were looked at as part of the twenty-seventeen and twenty-twenty-one fee studies. Staff looked at the same cities and compared them to the current permits in twenty-twenty-two. So we took, we grabbed, again, same cities that were looked at in twenty-twenty-one and we went ahead and looked at their twenty-twenty-two updated fees for these cities. So Carson and Gardena do not have an actual fence permit. However, they, they go based off of building and safety fence permits where it depends on valuation of whatever it is that the value of their, their project is going to be and that's how they charge their fence permits. And if you can see the lowest one here at Redondo Beach, Redondo Beach charges three hundred and thirty dollars, including one inspection and one permit for, for their fence permits. And then they charge additionally two hundred and twenty dollars per, per planning reinspection. So that means if I go out there and they did not meet the code, then I'm going to go, have to go back and then I'm going to charge them two hundred and twenty dollars. So that's what Redondo Beach is doing. Our fence permits actually four hundred and twenty dollars and it includes unlimited visits to the counter and it's just a flat fee, unlimited inspections, we're phone calls, et cetera, review for four hundred and twenty dollars. We have had situations where I've actually gone out there six times because for some reason, the applicant doesn't seem to want to change the, or like comply with the code and then I have to keep going back, which was recently happened about two weeks ago that I had to actually contact the applicant and let them know to send me photos because I had already gone five times out there. And then they finally complied. But that is all included in the four hundred and twenty dollar fee, it's a flat fee. This is an example of a fence permit that, what it would cost if we did it by the other city standards, so based off of just building permits. Staff and I worked together in putting this application. So if we did it by valuation, it would end up costing the applicant a thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars to actually get a building permit. The city only requires building permits when it is actually above six feet or if it's a retaining wall, when it has something to look at structurally so that we can prevent any, any of these fences from falling, then we will actually require a fence permit application for building and safety. But anything that's above six feet or retaining wall only. Everything else requires a four hundred and twenty dollar fee. Another thing is that if they do a less than twenty-five percent of, of repair on their fence, they do not, twenty-five percent of that linear area, they do not need to get a permit. So if they need to repair it, let's say it's like it burns down or they need a repair, they will not need to require a fence. So there's, there's certain circumstances where they come to staff and we can actually help them out and work with them so that they don't have to pay the four hundred and twenty dollar fee. This is an example. So back in, when the, the fence permit was adopted was because we have a lot of issues with materials that were not, that were being used for fencing that did not meet the code. Or this is just an example of, as a, a fence that meets the code, if you can see at the top, what it looks like. And then a fence that does not meet the code at the bottom. So that's just one example. They have actually used other types of material, they put fence on top of another, et cetera, making the community not, I guess, they, they don't match the residential community guidelines and it, it just makes it seem undesirable to, to be having these materials on site. So that's one of the reasons why we have these fence regulations so that we can keep the community maintaining, looking good, so that we can make the city a desirable place to be. Now, talking about flatwork and landscaping, so in two thousand seven, a permit application and plot plan for a flatwork and landscaping in the front yards was actually approved by council. And this was due to the fact that most people, if you take a look at the bottom left-hand corner in the picture, were basically putting cement all over their front yards for parking. You know, parking is the number one issue of the city and that was becoming a, a regular thing from, from residents to actually be concreting their whole front yard. So if you see this picture at the bottom left, that is already a grandfathered in prior to two thousand seven, so that's what it looks like now. So if, obviously if they wanted to come in and change anything, we, they would have to comply to the current code. But the, that was one of the reasons why the flatwork permit application was approved. And then there was no drainage, there was no drainage because it was impercolating into the ground since it was just all concrete. So it became a nuisance. So the city council decided to adopt that regulation and then also creating a nicer environment again with having a certain percentage of, of landscaping in the front yard, so the fifty percent. And the new regulations to install the flatwork would comply with the code and protect the health, welfare and safety of the community. So if you can see also on the right hand on the bottom, you can see what it looks like when they are complying with the code. So it, it just makes it a more desirable community and also it just meets the code, it, it percolates, it drains, et cetera. And that was one of the reasons why the council wanted to, to change everything in two thousand seven for the, for the, anybody wanting to do anything in the front yard to get an application.
Jared, you might want to add that to prevent parking pads as well.
Right, so that's the, what was intended at the left-hand side, the parking pads because of the parking problem. So this is a, a chart of what it costs in different cities, same cities that were used in the study again. Because there is a water conservation, regulations that, that were enacted by the state, most of these cities require actual plants, like landscaping plants with like, like dripping and, and sizes of trees, et cetera, for them to be able to do a water conservation landscaping in the front yard. The city of Longdale actually decided to do just a flatwork permit to be able to keep that fifty percent. So the fifty percent in the landscaping that's required. We encourage people to, if they want to do like a water conservation type of plant to, you know, just, they can show us like a small little plan. Technically, we're supposed to send it to a landscaping architect, but we, we work with the plants, materials that we have in our list. We have a list in, in our zoning code and we help them out to just make sure at least to meet the fifty percent. If they want to put in like drop tolerant plants and everything like that, we will work with them. Anything that's above five hundred square feet requires that landscaping plan to be reviewed. But because we don't, we don't want, again, we want to avoid that problem because we don't have a landscaping architect, number one, and number two, it's going to cost basically the two thousand, five hundred dollar deposit for a site plan review for that, for that to get done. We have our flatwork and landscaping, which is three hundred and ninety dollars, again, unlimited inspections, we work with a person at the counter. I've actually had people that don't know how to draw, help them out at the counter kind of just, you know, to make sure that they meet that fifty percent and it's pretty fair, I would say, in regards to, to what, everything that, that we offer under that one flat fee. And then the inspection, we go out there unlimited times as well. Again, the other cities are going based off of, so Gardena, Hawthorne, Redondo require a site plan review as part of this landscaping review. Carson and Manhattan Beach just require the low conception landscaping plans to be submitted, which in our case would be the two thousand, five hundred dollar site plan review deposit. But instead, it's a small little plan, just, anybody can draw it up, they can, we'll help them out at the counter and it's a three hundred and ninety dollars. Any questions?
There any questions over there? Report.
I have some questions. With regards to the implementation of those two permits, did, I mean, I guess I could see it either way, did the code cases go up because now we were enforcing it or, you know, and I, I guess I'm kind of curious to see how many people pull the permits? Because I, I usually get a lot of people just, you know, balking at the fee, so just kind of curious how it's played out since it's been implemented.
So we, we do have a lot of people actually pulling the permits when they get a code case situation. What we do offer along with municipal services is that if they don't want to pay for the fee, if they just want to put everything back to just grass, low, low water consumption grass or just, you know, they, they don't have to pay for it. It's just like remove the violation, just, it, it's kind of like a spoken rule that we have to help people out. Other people actually do pay for the fee and then, you know, they, they, they don't want to do grass because right now, obviously, we're in a, a drought, so they, they want to come and do other things, so we, we do help them out. And just to let the council know, we're, we're working with, with the people right now to, to have them at least provide us a fifty percent, but we're trying not to enforce the fact that if they don't want to do the work now until the drought is over, we're actually letting it, you know, putting that on hold so that we're not, you know, we want to help the people with all these regulations going on.
Jared, we're deferring.
Deferring.
We're not putting that hold, we're deferring-
Deferring.
The landscaping improvements, subject to the drought regulations being removed.
Right.
Oh, I guess, I guess part of my question too, thank you for, for that, was the, the fence permit. I'm, I guess I'm trying to wonder, it was implemented a while back, so before, you know, our time, but I guess I'm just wondering if, if, do we get a lot of voluntary people coming to apply or is it mainly just code cases?
I would say it's mainly code for the fence.
And, and are we talking the materials that are there or is it just, because I know some, like you can't have over a certain height and, you know, if it's, it can't block, you know, for safety reasons, if you're in a corner house, you can't have it blocking so that, you know, causes any accidents for the driver's views. So I guess I'm just trying to understand too, you know, it seems like, for me, I, I kind of don't see as much, with the exception of blocking the views as a health and safety issue as I would some others, just because I feel like it's one of those things where if you give the clear regulations, you're going to have people that comply and people that don't comply. And I, I just feel like sometimes people wouldn't even think that you would require a permit for a fence, so I'm trying to wonder how much, how much it's actually helping because I, I just wish we could make it a little easier for people to do home improvements such as a fence without, you know, having to go through too much work of multiple site plans and visits and all that. But I don't know what the rest of my colleagues think.
I, I do have a couple of questions. First one, you said twenty-five percent of my fence, there's no fee. First one, you said twenty-five percent of my fence, there's no fee. Is there a timeframe for me to do the other twenty-five percent of the fence without a fee? Or could I just wait a month and do the other twenty-five percent? How do you guys control that?
That, it's it's really kind of hard, to be honest, to know what they're doing. But if they do come and ask us at the counter what they can do, we we will let them know that it's twenty-five percent of that linear side of the of the fence. Obviously, we can't really keep track of what everybody's doing, but at least we will let them know. And there isn't something specific on the code that says the amount of time, but it's twenty-five percent of that linear section.
Yeah, but I I could do twenty-five percent of, let's say, I have a duplex and it's next to each other. I do the first duplex, which is twenty-five percent because it goes, it's a corner block. And then I'll wait a couple of months and then do the other duplex, another twenty-five percent. And then I'm saving the four hundred and twenty dollar fence.
Let me just say, so basically, you you asking her, how can we get around the system?
No, no, not though we're going to get around the system, but how do we implement?
I think people are smart enough to kind of figure.
No, there's people doing it on the weekend. They're fixing their fences on the weekend. But my question is, how do we implement? It's not fair for those that have to pay, that are paying the four twenty, okay?
Right.
That's where I'm going to. If I have to pay four twenty and my neighbor has duplex and he does twenty-five percent this month, and then a couple of months later, he does the other twenty-five percent.
Well, Mayor, Council, they, most people come in, ninety-nine percent of them that do come in, or their code, will know when we do a site visit, will notice the newer construction. This actually happened one time. It was down on Avis. The property owner had argued, he did the twenty-five and twenty-five. But we look at the newer construction, we take their word, what they tell us. But we can tell the newer construction, that happened, their their fence blew down, I think Council remembered that. And it was replaced by twenty-five percent, and then they had done some other twenty-five percent previously. We have to make a staff call subjective. We try to work with everyone. But most people come in, we're basing it on their honesty, they're telling us what they do, but they think they don't, because their neighbors turn them in. So a lot of times, you know, Longdale, it's small, people are documenting, they're saying, hey, they replaced this, and we go out and check. So but we rely on stat, we rely on the residents too to tell us. So we don't have, we do track the fence permits that are submitted. But if they go out there and we go out and notice, staff investigates, we're out there for the inspection, we'll notice the other part of the fence that's been replaced. We say, hey, you didn't you didn't tell us about this fence that was replaced, we amend the permit. It's all in the same fee. So there's no new fee. So we do try to work with people. That has happened, that Council brought up, that has happened several times for people who have been incrementally replacing their fences.
Yeah, because there's nothing that says, I can fix twenty-five percent today and two, three months do another twenty-five percent. My other question is, do we know why Carson and Gardena do not charge for fences?
They they don't have like an actual fence permit. I don't know the background of why they don't charge for planning fence permits. They do have their their building and safety fence permit. And a lot of, based on my experience, a lot of times is that they, it's just a building and safety because we are in a seismic zone. I've heard of places where the they don't require permits, and then they fall over when there's an earthquake, et cetera. So some people just opt, some cities just opt for the building and safety. But I would have to look into that and and get back to you and see what the reason is behind that.
Because I understand if you present it to me as a building and safety rather than a fence permit. You know, if you tell me, oh, it's because building and safety, earthquakes and things like that, I I'm okay with that. But just a fence, you know, that I could pay maybe three hundred dollars if I do the the work, and I'm paying four twenty for a permit.
No, no, Mayor, Council, just a clarification. So we don't require a building permit for the fencing for a number of reasons. One, the council made a conscious decision not to require that years back because you need a survey. Surveys cost money. You need to have construction plans, that's very expensive. Then you need owner's consent. That's why the city of Longdale does not require building permit. Those other cities, they may not, are, you guys made a conscious decision years back, the council to require only a zoning permit for the fence. It's only for zoning, not for the stability. We don't investigate it, it just gets built, it's on the property owner. But the other thing is, the cost of to that would be expensive to get a a survey done where your property lands are at. In addition, they have to hire, you know, someone that can draw up plant, construction plans. Real, they have to be submitted to building safety, planning and building safety. So those other cities, they require building permits. I know because a Longdale resident called me that has houses here, has property in Gardena, and they've called me before. And they said, hey, they don't have, they don't have a planning permit, it's just a building and safety permit. And it's a lot more expensive, as Jared has kind of alluded to. Our our permit is just for zoning, only the height and aesthetics per the direction of the ordinance.
And one more thing, landscaping, the flat work and landscaping. If I have a small, tiny lot, and I want to put, let's say, tolerant plants, three hundred and ninety dollars compared to Robert's lot that is larger, to me, it's it's a little bit too much because I'm going to probably go to Home Depot and buy several plants that will cost me a hundred bucks, and I'll do my own work. So I'm kind of on the fence on the flat work and and landscaping fees.
The flat work, Mayor and Council, is something that the council decided years back, you can change it. It was because of the proliferation of unpermitted parking pads. So the mayor, I think the mayor was here, but Councilman Curry. So that's why we have that requirement. It not only includes landscaping, but the hardscape areas that we have to measure. And the council decided years back, you wanted fifty percent live landscaping to prevent people from creating unpermitted, unauthorized parking pads. That covers that cost. What we've done since the ordinance was updated, just before I left last year in November, if the council recalls, the water-efficient landscaping, we've exempted most of our lots. Golden State's here. Oh, he's gone. Okay, good. So we exempted anyone under five hundred square feet now does not have to submit water-efficient landscaping plans. They don't have to get a landscape architect and irrigation expert and submit real plans, which would be almost twenty-five to review. We don't have to hire outside person to review them. Right now, everyone is under the five hundred square feet. We find a way to get them under the five hundred square feet for that cost. And that covers the inspections, the review, the aerial, what I think Jared's outlining in the staff report, there's a time and material study that covers that. That's what it covers that cost. But certainly, if the council wants to look at changing that too, we can bring something back for reconsideration.
I'm okay with the fifty percent landscaping. I'm just.
The fee, I mean, the fee, whatever the council would like.
The the fee is what I, I'm kind of on the fence because three hundred and ninety dollars, if I'm going to put a couple of plants and green grass, seeds, basically, you're going to throw seeds so that the grass grows, it's not going to cost me more than three hundred and ninety dollars. It's going to be less. So that's where I'm I'm at. I I'm not saying I'm against the fifty percent green, I'm just.
Right. It's the fee.
The fee to me is too much.
I just had a point of clarification with going back to the fence. Carson and Gardena, if it's under six feet, you don't have to pull anything?
They just have regulations.
Okay, whatever's required by the, okay, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Okay, anything else? I mean, I can appreciate that we're not requiring a building and a safety permit because as you were saying, that that would definitely increase the the price. Not only the the price if it was a building and safety permit, but also you're talking about all the the players, you know, involved that you have to coordinate with, that the homeowner would have to coordinate with, that gets a little encumbrance in in addition to the to the price. So on our end, if we're just looking at the zoning issue, I think that's the the better approach. Now, we can debate whether or not the the fees themselves are, you know, in line, or they're too expensive. I did have a resident, she made a comment about about the fees, and maybe you can shed a little light on this. She made the illustration that when staff comes out and they check the, I guess they do an inspection or what have you, isn't the staff already being paid? So when the staff comes out, you know, and I understand cost recovery and stuff like that. But when the staff comes out, you know, they've already been paid. So she equates that to, you know, if I'm a teacher and I'm already getting paid to teach, but then I got to teach another class, I'm already getting paid to teach, you know, in that class. So that's part of my job description. So why would I, why would they then pay the teacher, right? Some something that they're already paying them for, basically. So how would we address that? Now, we're saying, of course, cost recovery. And I understand that we want to make, we want the department to be self-sufficient in terms of it's basically paying for itself, like it's enterprise, like we kind of mentioned earlier. Enterprise is those types of departments that that pretty much pays for themselves, right? Like if you had a bus line or whatever, those are usually like enterprises or what have you. And so all the services are paid for out of the the bus fees, whatever you call them, that they impose, you know, on the on the riders. So that's an enterprise. I don't know if I look at the planning department as an enterprise or should function as an enterprise. I mean, I I do can appreciate cost recovery. And I do appreciate that if the the planning department is not an an item in the the budget because all of the, they're self-sufficient by the all the the fees or what have you. But I don't know if I'm disturbed if we had to use some general fund money for the the planning department. I'm not sure if I'm disturbed by that because I don't really look at it as an enterprise, unlike, you know, bus services or what have you. Some people, I mean, you can argue that you can choose to ride the bus or not. Or if you don't ride the bus, there may be other modes of transportation that you can 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 use. But if you're doing a home addition or you're a developer, you have to use the community development department, right? So you'd have no choice in that. So in in that regard, that's why I don't really look at it as an enterprise because you don't have a choice in the matter, right, or what have you. That's just kind of like my observations on it. So let's let's.
I did want to add, because I really appreciate that comment, is I don't look at it that either. Regardless, the work's going to need to be done. And part of, there was a section in the staff report that talked about the general fund subsidizing it, and we could be using that funds for sheriff services and that. And and I I guess that in that point, I didn't look at it that way because, you know, and I'll bring up the part, the sales tax that was increased. Like that was marketed as, oh, this will help pay for sheriff services and all that. So, you know, we kind of asked the community to kind of, you know, come up and and pay a little more for some of the services. I think in some ways, there needs to be a little bit on our end of, you know, working with the community and looking at our constituents and and kind of looking at it as a, as, you know, we've asked them, you know, and I I would think that we can work on a few of our fees and and not break the bank, but, you know, notice that, you know, we're serving the community and and looking ways that we can encourage people to comply, but at the same time, you know, not making it a hardship on them.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or items on, this is item eleven?
So I guess my question is, was there a direction on that? Because I kind of want to look at the fees, either reducing the fee or just, I mean, quite honestly, I wouldn't even mind. I mean, I don't know if it's under six feet. I kind of don't agree that creating a permit. I guess I could see the point of the violations and you're covering costs because you're having to have them correct it. But I kind of don't, kind of don't agree with the fee as it stands now.
Okay. Didn't we, seemed like we agreed to look at the fee.
Is that part of the residential that we talked about? Okay, okay, then that's fine.
My my thing is, I still want the citizens to come in and show us what they're going to do so that they meet requirements. But I think the fees itself is, you know, something that we, we need to either eliminate or reduce.
Wait, Mayor and Council, which was the flat work and the fence one or both?
I think we're looking at, yeah.
Okay.
Well, especially the fence one, well, for me.
I would like to see both.
Thank you.
Anything else on this this item? Everybody good? Okay. You got some good direction, are you?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay, well, that was item eleven. So item eleven. All right, we got some shuffling around, okay. Yeah, item twelve is the quarterly investment report. Let's have the report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is the, you know, fourth quarter for FY twenty-one, twenty-two investment report. And we normally this is just a consent item, but we wanted to bring it up to council and have a discussion about where our finances are, where our cash is at, how we stand, and what the current economy, what we're looking to do going forward. Just to kind of go over the numbers real quick, we have about forty-one point six million in cash and investments. Nineteen of that is in the just the regular checking account, and about eighteen and a half million is in the LEAF state county, state pool. The state pool, as of June thirty, is earning just under one percent, whereas, you know, which is better than earlier in the year. Earlier in the year is as low as point two percent. And the checking account, there really is no interest earnings on that one. So we're looking at moving some of that into interest earning, either LEAF or CDs. Also, early June, July five and July eleven, two CDs became matured. Each one was about two hundred and forty-seven thousand. Those were earning two percent. So we replaced those two, and we bought two more. So totally, in July, we purchased four. And those were maturing anywhere between one and a half to three years, and each one is earning between three and three and a quarter percent. So better than what we had, but still, I mean, and better, and also better than what LEAF is providing. With CDs, you're limited to FDIC insurance limits of two hundred and fifty thousand. That's why we usually go a few thousand below the two fifty mark. And we're looking at current rates right now, about three percent is what we're getting, anywhere from a year and a half to three years out. So we're looking at what we can do there. But again, we're limited to how many we can buy because the FDIC limit is per bank. So we can't, you know, we can't go to one bank and buy ten of them. We can only do two fifty per bank. So there's a limit of what we can do there. The other thing I think we're going to start looking into is short-term T-bills or T treasury bills and treasury notes. These are fully backed by the full faith and credit of the United States government, and there really is no limit of how much we can purchase. We can do like million-dollar lots if we wanted to. Current rates for those, about two point eight percent to three and a quarter, right around there. Still better than what LEAF is getting us. And I think the best way to move forward is do short-term treasury bills, which treasury bills are from four weeks to one year out is their maturity. Treasury notes are one year to ten years, and treasury bonds are twenty to thirty years. I would recommend currently, and what I'm kind of looking towards is doing the shorter term so that, because it does look like with the Fed's increasing rates, it feels like interest rates should start to go back up. They haven't yet drastically, but I think that they will start to go back up. So we can, at least for right now, take advantage of three percent instead of the point nine from LEAF and do short-term and kind of do like a ladder approach and build up on that. As rates go up, we just continue to buy more to levels that we're comfortable with buying. And, you know, also making sure that we have enough cash on hand to do the regular operations of the city as well. Any questions? That's all I have.
Questions?
On the T-bills.
Yes.
You said it's two point eight, or it'll probably go.
You know, last time I checked, they quoted me two point eight, they get up, it just, it fluctuates day to day. Those are auctioned off. The T-bills are auctioned off. So you buy them at a discount, then when they mature, So you buy them at a discount, then when they mature, you get the full face value. So if it's a thousand dollar note, you would pay, say, just say nine fifty for it, and when it matures, you get the thousand. So that's how those are done.
And what's the risk? Is there a risk?
There really is no risk with treasury notes or in bonds. Uh, these are fully backed by the US government.
And were you thinking of doing a six month?
Um, you know, I could do like three months, six months, even nine months out. So just depending on what the different ones are paying, what the interest rates are going, it'd have to be like, I'd have to talk with a broker and see what rates are and make a decision at that point.
And if we, let's say, it's three months, the same interest as a six?
They all fluctuate, they would vary. Um, usually the longer the notice, the better the rate would be. But again, that kinda fluctuates market, uh, day-to-day activity, what's going on.
And the last question, I don't know if you could answer it. Do you all do the research and then we vote on that? Um, what to, or do we just allow him to?
What we do is, I just wanted him to put this on the, so the council knows what we're doing. So being full transparent.
So you, you handle, and you'll bring us a report?
The way the code is written is me along with the city manager would make that decision to purchase it. So because if I wait to bring it to council, then I'll miss out on that. I can't wait a week to, you know, then the rates change and it won't be available.
But you'll bring it back?
I will let you know, you will also know within the quarterly investment report what's happened and what we've purchased and what's matured as well, so yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna say, um, thank you for explaining, um, my treasury bills was, I have, that I purchased, um, every month. And I was trying to figure out, how does that really work? That I have known for the last maybe five years. So thank you for explaining that to me.
No problem.
I kinda knew, but you kinda, you know, put it in, in perspective, um, more so. Um, I think that's good that we, we're looking at these, um, investment opportunities and not just putting it on automatic pilot. Um, I know some years, years ago, that was pretty much, seemed like that was like the policy where you would set it and forget it. And we had some, um, monies in these yo- low yielding or no yielding, um, um, instruments, you know, when they could have been, um, in other, you know, instruments or what have you, um, growing and working out for the city. So I'm glad that we, to know that we're reviewing these so that we can, uh, move them around as needed or what have you, so we can get the best, um, interest and, um, make sure that our, our money is working, um, for us. So I appreciate that. Um, so thank you for that investment report. Unless there's any other comments on the investment report, the quarterly investment report? Okay. I'm gonna impose this rule. You gotta, if, if anybody wanna speak, you gotta speak before we start deliberating. But this is an exception. Go ahead.
Can, can I respond to that? Um, so cash balance does not mean surplus or deficit. This is the cash balance that the city has on hand. Um, this is not the same as if it's a surplus or if it's a de- deficit. So it's two different issues. Um, the cash that we have on hand is, is not necessarily our fund balance, nor does it mean that we have a surplus.
There you go. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you for that question. Okay. With that, we will receive and file the quarterly investment report without objections. And we will continue with item 12, 13, let's do 13. The, um, second amendment to the, the contract service agreement.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, Julian's not here today, so I'm, uh, doing the item for him. As the council knows, uh, there's been some staff that have left, engineering staff. Julian brought an item, um, uh, previously to the council for consideration. And our fee was done back in May. Um, a firm was selected. Now we're bringing forward for council consideration to extend the contract because it's gonna take a few more months to recruit the two missing engineers. Um, as outlined on page two of, two of the staff report, um, as you can see, the, 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 the addition of the amendment will be covered in the costs of all the different measures. Prop two, two, uh, C25, measure R, um, and measure M, SB1 and gas tax. Uh, very limited will be coming out of the general fund, um, to pick cost, uh, for the proposed amendment for a total funding of seventy-two thousand. Staff has recommended approval to extend the contract with engineering to allow staff additional time to recruit for those positions in, um, public works. Two engineers and associate and assistant engineer have, uh, since left the city and moved on. So, uh, we need the help in commi- uh, public works and the contract is proposed not to exceed seventy-two thousand. This concludes staff report. I'll be happy to attend any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions of the staff report? Okay, see and none, we will, I think we can just receive and file the staff report. Correct, Mr. Attorney?
Uh.
Oh, okay.
This one is approve the second.
Oh, you wanna approve, you wanna, so approve something.
A motion to approve it.
Okay, you wanna approve it? Okay. Motion been made by?
Question before we get to?
Okay, let's, let's take your question.
Uh, I see all this work that, that has to be done. Can our director do some of this work? Can he have boots on the ground too? Or is he just sat behind a desk with Ian Bombach drinking cherry coke?
Well, I, I've already had a conversation, uh, with Mr. Lee. I, I, this is a hands-on city. As the council knows, I'm out in the field daily too. Um, so, uh, I mentioned this'll be the last amendment because, uh, they, they, the burn rate for this firm is quite high in terms of the fees and costs. So we hopefully get those positions filled. Ray Latt's working on getting them filled. Um, but as of right now, not too many applicants, as the, just so the council knows. Um, it's very limited, uh, qualified candidates out there. So we are looking though. Uh, Ray Latt's done a great job doing recruitments and we're trying to get the position filled. So I've mentioned to Julian, he might have to put in some, he already has stretched his staff, um, as well as himself. But, uh, I mentioned he might have to put in a little bit more work and slow things down a little bit. We might have to slow things down a little bit to, uh, get him so he can handle a little amount of work, just like Jared's doing.
From fourteen thousand now to one, up to seventy-two thousand for twelve weeks.
This will be the last proposed amendment.
Okay. That's my concern, question.
Well, then now I have a question.
Okay.
Sorry.
Next question.
Are we looking for someone that is starting or someone that is highly qualified? Or could we start in the middle and train them the way we want them?
Um, so there's two positions, an associate and assistant. The assistant is the entry level engineering training and the associate is more advanced engineering that does more advanced work. So he needs two different skill sets to augment his, what he needs there. Right now with this firm, they're providing all of that and doing the work of, you know, two engineers, but he definitely, we're gonna need both. Definitely need both there. We have an assistant, engineering training, someone that's learning the ropes and can be built up and maybe promote up within the organization. And then an associate, more advanced level engineer. So we're doing, we're looking for both.
Okay, sorry.
Very good. Oh, no, no problem.
Now, with that, I'll second.
So we're, well, let's, so you entertain the motion to approve?
Yes.
The second amendment to the contract?
Yes.
By Kearney and second by Quavis. Any discussion on the motion?
Vice versa.
For administrative item number 13, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, so that was 13. Item 14, the 2022 illegal fireworks suppression update plan.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. Um, this Fourth of July marked the second year in which the city of Longdale operated its illegal fireworks suppression plan. And this year, some changes were introduced and some corrections were made based on lessons learned from the 2021 plan. Uh, as I said, 2022 is second year of implementing this plan. Many of the tactics used in 2021 detail were again used, such as heavy presence of overtime deputies, undercover vehicles so officers could move stealth, stealthily through city streets, and also major public awareness campaign, including social media, message boards and, uh, street banners, as well as, uh, cable channel videos. Uh, significant changes to the two, 2022 plan included a shortened timeframe from eight weeks to two weeks, which allowed deputies to concentrate on their regular duties. Um, also advertisements on social media sites soliciting for the sales fireworks was something we also introduced this year. Um, we learned from a previous year that having the deputies out from eight weeks out before the holiday really didn't yield any additional sites. So we shortened it to two weeks and we found that worked much better because it kept our deputies in their regular duties. Um, as I said, the shift adjustments were shortened. Um, that way they could do, concentrate on gang suppression, homeless details and, and other details that they normally do throughout the year. Um, we did result in thirty-six administrative citations this year that were given. That is twice as many citations as were paid for last year. Uh, when I say paid for, um, eighteen sites were paid for, twenty-five were written last year, but some of those were actually, uh, we lost in hearings and others were actually dismissed by staff because, uh, they weren't correct addresses. So we couldn't determine from the deputies where the sites were meant to go. But eighteen sites were written last year, uh, that were paid, uh, thirty-six so far have been written this year. Um, also during the two-week period, uh, leading up to the holiday, there were a hundred and ten calls for service to the sheriff's department in 2021. Uh, this two weeks leading up to the holiday, there was only seventy-two calls for service to the sheriff's department. Um, this was a, uh, reduction of about thirty-three percent less calls this year than last during the same week period. I also wanna add that, uh, Sergeant Osborne put out some information last week that said there was actually like a hundred and sixty-four calls for service, but he was adding, adding the time for the length of that entire eight weeks. So I just took the last two weeks of this year versus last year. So that's why the number is different from, from Ricky's. But in the two weeks last year, there was a hundred and ten service calls. This year, there was only forty-seven, um, excuse me, seventy-four. Um, here's some of the comparisons from last year's 2001 detail to this year's. As I said, eighteen citations were paid, uh, thirty-six citations have been issued. Uh, hopefully we'll win all of those, all the sites that we did keep. There were actually forty sites written, but staff looked over the sites and about four of them were duplicates of, of sites for the same house. So we couldn't, in good faith, make those sites go forward. So we, we pulled them off and didn't issue them. Um, as I said, there was a thirty-three percent reduction in service calls for fireworks. Um, in, uh, we reduced the length of the enforcement by seventy-five percent. And, uh, a list of violating parties from last year were provided to the deputies for this year. And we had no one repeat from last year that issued, was issued a citation last year. So none of the, uh, none of the people that would have gotten a two thousand dollar site got one this year. Um, and for the next year's suppression plan, we do plan to meet in a few weeks to do a debrief with Sergeant Osborne and city staff and, and Sean so we can examine things that worked and what didn't work. Um, the, one of the things we did this year with, was the advertisements on social media. We found actually that it was a good idea, but we kept getting kicked off of social media sites because we were basically soliciting for something illegal. And Facebook and those, uh, Craig's List has their own standards, so they kept kicking us off, so. But even that didn't cost us very much, it only cost us sixty-five dollars in, in, uh, of our budget. So, um, that's one thing we do wanna continue in, in next years, but, uh, that was just one of the, something we learned from. And for now, that's, that's all I have on the fireworks. And I can take any questions if anyone has any.
Okay, let's hear from a resident first before we have any questions. Good evening again. Uh, last night, I, I, last week, I attended a city council meeting with the sheriff's department. Unfortunately, myself and another resident were the only ones in attendance as notification of the meeting was only provided the day before. While the city uses Nextdoor to promote head and health fears and candidacy for the upcoming elections, why not use Nextdoor to post dates of city council meetings? Hopefully we can get some clarification on what was said at the meeting at that meeting, tonight's report. Captain Allen's email of July 8, 2021 indicates that a total of twenty-six citations were issued last year, with sixteen of those on July 4th. This year, there are a total of thirty-six citations, twenty of those on July 4th. Nice report indicates the total number of citations was doubled from last year, which would actually be fifty-two. But now they're qualifying it by saying, oh, out of the twenty-six, only eighteen were paid. Out of the thirty-six issued this year, how do we know how many are gonna be paid from that? So the actual double number of citations from last year would actually be fifty-two. At last week's sheriff's department meeting, it was indicated there were seventy-four calls for service on the day of July 4th. Today's staff report, they said there were seventy-four calls for service in the two weeks leading up to July 4th. And it's not clear from that or this, what's the number of calls on July 4th. A July 5th email to city council states, over the course of four nights, our overtime deputies and SEOs wrote a total of forty citations and there were forty-five calls for service received by dispatch related to fireworks. That doesn't really make sense, as I called nine times during that time period. And I know of another resident called several times, so I can account for like twelve to fifteen calls right there. Was the call center understaffed? There were times I phoned rank repeatedly and other times I received a busy signal on July the 4th. This went identified a small number of calls coming in. How were they logging in the nature of the calls? What were the number of calls actually received on July 4th? Regardless of the stats regarding the number of phone calls and the number of citations, my surrounding area still faced a constant barrage of orders that set off car alarms. My time was wasted with the many calls I made requesting police service. Although the explosives were coming from the same areas all night, there was no improvement and it still completely quieted closer to midnight with my last call at eleven fifty-three PM. And this is after it started heavy around eight-thirty PM. Every year I'm prepared outdoors to use my water hose against fires who I would notice patrols in the vicinity. It is my understanding on July 4th, there was only one undercover car with the rest of the extra officers that easily identify patrol cars, which as far as safety, the officers may not be a bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for those comments. Okay, so that's the, um, oh, one more, okay.
I enjoy July the 4th and I enjoy fireworks. I was at my granddaughter's on July 4th, um, normally am not here this time of the year, from approximately seven PM till ten PM plus. Uh, there was not one black and white that came down that street the entire several hours I was there. So there didn't appear to be any enforcement. I didn't see any large fireworks in that block, but within two to three blocks in several directions, there were massive fireworks, hundreds of feet in the air. And those were going on almost continuously for two to three hours. I enjoyed it. I did not hear of anybody being hurt or any damage occurring. I don't have any problem with it. I really don't. Now, if it had gone on to midnight, I would have had a problem. I do like to go to bed around eleven o'clock. And I had a problem with, like the other person said, with noise. Uh, and enforcement from the sheriff's department is very lax, if at any, from my experience. So anyway, I don't, I don't see a problem with fireworks and I enjoy it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so that is the, um, 2022 illegal fireworks suppression plan.
Wrong guy hasn't spoken.
Since I was unable to attend last Monday night, I just wanna add my two cents to this. In moving forward, what I would like to have evaluated is, it feels like to me, let's just face it, on the Fourth of July, you could stand out in your front yard in my neighborhood and you could see them being lit. It was like an apple tree ready to be picked. You, all you, all you had to do is stand here and you, you'd see three of them going, you, you saw it. Our numbers were only twenty, basically, per night. I would like to see, a- and I'm grateful for those forty that we had written, so please don't take it the wrong way that I'm criticizing the sheriff's department. What I would like to see is an evaluation of the time it takes per citation. Because if we have this many people out at night, it looks like to me our max number is only going to be twenty citations with this many people. I'd like that looked into and to see how we could streamline, how we could help it, how we could speed up in between. Because I'll tell you, my neighborhood was on fire. Uh, my mom enjoyed it too, just so you know. She sat in her bed with her big picture window and enjoyed it until two o'clock of the, in the morning. I, for one, did not enjoy it because I had the dogs that were medicated. And the next morning, the asthma sufferer in my house, who had problems breathing, so it's not my favorite thing. Furthermore, I would also like to ask that, as we're planning for 2023, that we look into, I'm, to, I'm told, and thank goodness in your report, you said that we had no repeat offenders. I would like to see some changes there. In other cities around us, due to drought and other things, they're raising that secondary fine to about five thousand dollars. I agree that, I think that something like that needs to occur. Um, also, I think that the time limit, I think if I remember right, on our ordinance that we wrote, we said, if they incur that second offense within a certain timeframe, I'd like that comment removed. If that's not a statewide, I don't care if it's six or seven years later, and you're the the same individual, I want that five thousand dollars from you. All right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Those are my ideas on the suppression plan. But I really would like to sit down with everybody that's involved and hear more about what we can do to streamline it, to get it even higher numbers than what we just saw there.
Of course, yeah, those are all to be considered, I think they're all good suggestions. I can address some of Mr. Abrams' questions tomorrow, just through email personally. I'm not sure of some of the numbers he had, I'm not sure where he got those, so. But I have the ones from Ricky that he gave that show the dispatcher. I can get some information additionally about how it's broken down in terms of if they get a duplicate call, they probably, they aren't going to enter it seven times, they're just going to enter it a single time if everybody's reporting the same thing, so. But again, I can get that information from Ricky, I don't have the particulars of how dispatch works, so. But I would say that some of the decisions made by Ricky were for officer safety, unlike a parking ticket, if there's a party of fifty people, they don't want to just send a single officer in there, and plus, everybody who's been drinking or whatever, they'll try to become lawyers and say, well, this is unjust, or this is, so. So it does take a lot longer to issue the sites, so.
Well, it's my understanding our officers at night were two in a car.
Yes.
And a lot of the times, they were traveling with two cars together.
Yeah, there were two cars deep, but if with the undercover officers, they're in plain clothes, so if they were arriving something, they wouldn't be issuing a site, they would just observe the violation, call in the black and white, black and white would then take over. But then you, again, you only have two officers in uniform in one black and white car, so it doesn't seem like there's a heavy presence, a presence even though you've got two other officers there. They're, they're probably armed and they're radioed, but they're not wearing police uniforms, and they're not in a police car, so people aren't necessarily listening to them. And officer safety wise, that is kind of a dangerous situation if it's only two uniformed officers and a group of forty or fifty who've been, and you're.
That's why I'd like to evaluate, and is twenty our max number in that timeframe?
Sure, sure.
Really quick. I know we are looking into the alert system, so if we get it prior to next year, it would be a good thing for us to send a couple of alerts to everybody, whether they like it or not, at least they're getting something saying, you're going to get fined if you have illegal fireworks. And if you could clarify exactly how many fines, because Randall is saying a number, I just can't remember what they were, so if you could clarify that maybe at the next meeting?
Sure. And I was going to say too, as I said, thirty-six citations were issued, but that's thirty-six anger residents that are calling, emailing, saying, hey, I didn't, what are you talking about? I wasn't home, I didn't do this. So that's why we still have to examine it. A lot of people who got citations last year appealed to citations. I imagine thirty-six people are going to appeal the citations they got this year. Very few people just say, oh, no problem, I'll pay it. I mean, everybody's going to, so the process isn't over yet. We, we don't know exactly how many, how many people are going to actually pay and how it's going to work, because they still appeal these just like they would a parking ticket.
Are we fining the homeowner if it's a rental or the renter, the renter?
Contact, the deputies are always trying to make contact, so if someone's in the front yard, they'll, they'll try to make contact, say, hey, sir, come over here, let me get your I.D., they'll write that person the ticket. That might, that might not be a renter or a homeowner, it could be just a visitor to the city at a party. So whoever they observe doing it. If they can't observe because it's behind barriers such as backyard walls or fences, things like that, and nobody comes to the door, they can write a citation that they'll fill out partially, then my staff will complete the citation the next day once we find out who the property owner is, and then the property owner will get the citation for the actions of their tenant or themselves, we don't know if they're a renter or themselves. But again, the challenge with that is that if we see, or if the deputies see fireworks going off at eight o'clock at night from a backyard, they write one ticket, they can't just every five minutes write another ticket, even if the violator continues to go for three hours. So those fireworks, basically, they can only write a single citation, unless, unless you want them to write, I mean, but if they're writing.
I would rather have sent the ticket to the homeowner if I'm, if he's renting from me.
Yeah.
I've been picking at you all day.
Yeah, I'm the problem all night.
But send it to the homeowner. I mean.
What, what we found.
You're responsible for the house. If your neighbor's house burns down because he is doing the fireworks.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, the goal is always to make contact. I mean, that's, if, if the deputies can get the person who lit the firework, get his info and write him a ticket, that's the best plan, because that's the guy who did it.
Even if they don't live in Longdale?
Yeah, they, they saw him committing the crime, so that's who's going to pay for it. Then hopefully they won't come back to Longdale, because they got, you know, a hundred, a thousand dollar fine. But, yeah, if they can't make contact, then it goes to the homeowner.
Okay.
And then to answer, I know, Rhonda, you're kind of bumping on that too.
I think that there's another question that's brewing here, because some of the things that you just said, two, within the last three years, we had a house that the person in the same day got two or three citations, because it started like at one o'clock in the afternoon. When did we change and say, oh, no, once they get a citation, they can go and party the night away?
Well, actually, we, we just sort of made an executive decision, but if it's hours apart, then we'll write, we'll keep the second citation. If, if the deputy saw it at nine o'clock and then sees it again at two in the morning or the next day, both those sites will stand. But we had some tickets this year that were literally five minutes apart, so we're like, okay, that's.
That's something I would like to be included on in some of that decision making.
Sure, and, and the thing with that, though, for me, is that, like I said, everyone is going to appeal these citations. If they, if they go before a judge or hearing officer and say, look, I got four sites inside of twenty minutes, I didn't even know I got one site until it came in the mail, we're going to have a tough time winning that, that argument. It'd be like writing a parking ticket every five minutes to a car parked in the red, and you know, the person doesn't even know they got the first ticket, so it'd be hard to, hard to make the other three stand.
But I'm arguing the other side of it is, okay, so they pay the thousand dollars, now they can go hog wild and we can't do anything about it, and that's wrong too.
Understood, yeah. And but again, they might not even realize they got the first ticket because no contact was made, we're just, our deputies just saw fireworks from backyard, so that's, that's the challenge with that. But these are, these are all things we want to discuss in the debrief and get input from S.A.O.'s as well, so.
Mr. Mayor, if it's the will of the council, we can certainly bring back a draft revision to your ordinance with enhanced fine amounts, which would be consistent with the new state enhanced fine amounts for large-scale illegal fireworks. And then some of these other things as well. As the council knows, council really can't get involved in the minutia of how the citations and prosecution go, but you do set policy, so we would either put it in the ordinance or set it as a policy that then staff would carry forth. So I want to make sure we keep those separate, and that's worth having a discussion about. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
I would be open to, to supporting you writing a new draft with new enhanced fines.
Yes, and I would say just not to, to belabor the point, but I'm also in favor of enhanced fines for repeat offenders. I'm glad to see that we did not have any repeat offenders from, from last year, so maybe that's an indication that once is enough, once you, you know, get fined for illegal fireworks, but you do, you will have those that decide that, you know, it's the price of doing, doing business. If you, if you got a party going on and everyone chipped in a few dollars, you know, you may decide, well, that was the, the price of the party, it cost us a thousand bucks or what have you, and, or two thousand bucks or whatever. So, yeah, I think, yeah, it would be fitting to have some type of enhanced fines for repeat offenders.
With that, unless there's anything else on this item, we took a lot of notes, and they'll report back, so we'll receive and follow that one. Let's move to item fifteen, consideration of ordinance making possession of a Cadillac converter violation.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. Over the past two years, as had, there has been a spike in the number of crimes involving vehicles. With so many more people working from home as a result of the pandemic, criminals have begun to focus their attention on stealing items from parked cars. One of the items that has seen a significant increase in theft in recent years is catalytic converters. Catalytic converters contain precious metals which assist in the reduction of harmful materials being emitted from gas-powered engines. And catalytic converters are external components found on the underside of vehicles, making them very easy to steal and hard to identify when recovered. Even when a criminal is caught in possession of catalytic converters, it is difficult to crime to prosecute, as there's almost no way to tie the catalytic converter to the victim vehicle. Recently, another Southland city created an ordinance making possession of a catalytic converter a violation of their municipal code, allowing for deputies and city staff to administer administrative citations to anyone in possession of a catalytic converter. Staff would like the council's approval to prepare similar ordinance making possession of a catalytic converter punishable by up to one thousand dollars per unit. We believe this will discourage thieves from stealing catalytic converters and also provide sheriff's deputies with another means to make arrests of criminals in possession of stolen property. And I have, can I ask any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Do our other cities around us also have ordinances, or would we be like one of the first ones?
We'd be one of the first. My understanding is Artesia was the first one that began this, and up until then, there was no cities doing it. And I understand there's also some other legislation to fine people who purchase catalytic converters, but that would be within our realm, that's a state proposition, I believe.
Have the, Artesia and what was the other city you mentioned?
Just Artesia, so this is the only one I'm aware of so far.
Have their ordinance been tried?
I, I believe they only began a few months ago with this, so I, I'd have to research it, I don't know if they've even written a site for this yet. And speaking with, with Sergeant Osborne about this, they haven't encountered too many catalytic converters in the possession of people they pull over. This would just be a secondary thing, likely, if someone's, if they're pulling over somebody and searching the car for some other reason, and they happen to find ten catalytic converters, they could then write ten sites for that person, so that even if they weren't to be able to tie it to a particular victim vehicle, they'd still be able to punish the person who's, and, and like any citation, you know, if the person is a mechanic and he can prove that, yeah, I'm, I'm working on catalytic converters, it's my business, I purchased these, and then the sites would be dismissed, and there'd be very little risk to incorporating this ordinance.
So, just, just for a point of clarification, because it just says making possession of catalytic converters, you mean stolen catalytic, or no?
It would just be any catalytic, I mean, every one of us has a catalytic converter in our car right now, so obviously not an attached catalytic converter, and we could word that in the, in the ordinance, but if you were pulled over and you had five catalytic converters in your trunk or in your backseat, this would allow deputies to write five thousand dollars in citations to that person. And again, if they're, if they have a legitimate reason for having them, then, then they can definitely prove that. I mean, catalytic converters are not cheap, so they'd have a receipt, or they, hey, I'm a mechanic, I'm working on stuff, you know, they, they would have to appeal it the way anybody would have to appeal any other site. But again, it's very unusual to have five catalytic converters, and, you know, I've never had one, so I don't know why anybody would have a lot of catalytic converters in their, in their possession, so.
And my, similar to what Robert, I'm trying to figure out, like, if this has been tested, if not, like, what authority do we really have?
Yeah, it's, it's brand new, it's brand new, like I said, we'd be, we'd be groundbreaking in bringing this forth, but that's not a bad thing.
So let's say hypothetically, I found a Cadillac converter.
Yeah.
And I just happened to be in possession with it, just a mere possession of that Cadillac converter would make me eligible for a ticket, although.
Correct, correct.
There's no probable cause to suggest beyond the fact that I have it. I'm, I'm just saying, I just happened to find it, you know, I'm just, I just happened to, because that's what I'm going to argue, that.
Sure, and again, if you.
That my cousin gave it to me, his best friend didn't, wasn't using it, gave it to me.
Yeah, no, I understood, that, that would be a problem, that, that someone could potentially, if they just found a catalytic converter, but if they just found five, that's a little more.
But what if you're a scrap metal person?
Sure, again.
That you pick up a.
Yeah, and then that would be a legitimate.
Mechanic shops, and you have two on your, in the back of your truck.
Sure, and every, every.
How do you prove that?
Well, if you, if you, if you do that for a living, you have some proof.
So if you have a scrap, a truck with scrap metals and two in there, it's not.
Yeah, it wouldn't be too odd, but again, it would, the deputies would have their own discretion to write a ticket or not, you know, they wouldn't have to necessarily, but this would just be one other weapon they could have. But again, as far, I, I'd have to research if, if it's been tried by Artesia, I don't know how many they've even written, if any, but they're the only city I know that's doing this.
Well, my only concern is it sounds like you're guilty until proven innocent versus innocent until proven guilty, that's, that's the only concern I have.
And if you're a scrap metal collector, this would be the perfect business to get into, because then, you know, if you got five Cadillac converters, right, you may have need for it if you, if you collect them and you got other metals or what have you.
Sure, and, and staff is just looking for direction on putting forth an ordinance, I mean, we, we can, I can put one forth, and then we can still argue or debate it as, you know, before, you know, as you read it, and see if there's, we can certainly put more language into the ordinance than, than other cities have put, and then if it, if the council doesn't believe in it, then we don't necessarily have to do it. Like I said, and speaking with Ricky, there hasn't been, he's not aware of a lot of arrests they've made that happened, also have catalytic converters in the car, but they weren't really looking for them, so that's part of it, so he couldn't really give a hard number, but it's just a potential tool that deputies could use.
So I'm good with it, because I don't know any scrap metal person or any garage would be giving away Cal converters to, when they can recycle themselves. So, Robin, if you had two in your car and you said, all right, Otto gave them to you, I think you look crazy, dude, I'd arrest you, I'd cite you, I would cite you. Because nobody's going to give away money, nobody.
That's right, true.
And I'm kind of the opposite, or I feel though, I just feel it's a little too much where you automatically have when you're guilty. You know, there's, I just, I'm a little bit hesitant on, on that part, is automatically assuming that you're guilty than having to prove all that, so I'm a little bit, you know, I don't mind looking at it, but I, I don't, the way it sounds currently, I'm a little hesitant to go that route.
Of course.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to see a little bit more research on, is it Artesia?
City of Artesia, yes.
Yeah, and see what their results are, how their program works before we, we do anything.
Yeah, I've, I've been in touch with Artesia, I can get some information, find out.
I mean, I, I like it, but I want to see what Artesia is doing, how it's, you know, if, if they cited ten people and ten, nine of them fought it and lost, I mean, won, then,
Yeah, I can, I can contact Artesia and get some additional information first for our council.
I don't see any harm in that. What's the pleasure of this body, can we?
Well, it sounds like they're going to bring it back.
More information on it?
Yeah, more information.
I'm okay with that. Okay, it sounds like we have consensus that they are bringing more information back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, she was good, yeah, yeah, she's good. She's good. Okay, you'll bring that back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for drafting that, uh, bring it to our consideration.
You heard my nod.
Yeah, I heard your nod, yeah, it was, yeah. Okay, item sixteen is a coyote plan.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and honored members of the city council.
I know we have a plan, now we have updates.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. In recent weeks, members of the city council, as well as community residents, have asked about city protocol in regards to coyotes, as there has been an uptick in sightings in recent months. Coyotes are extremely adaptive animals and have the ability to survive and thrive in varying climates and environments. Coyotes can hunt live animals as well as scavenge through discarded waste to find sustainable amounts of food. The coyote population is larger than it has ever been, just as the population of humanity is as large as it has ever been, resulting in more encounters between people and coyotes. Over time, coyotes have become more comfortable around humans as a result of this. Several steps can be taken by residents to make coyotes less comfortable with humans, including reducing animal, or, excuse me, reducing available food sources, securing trash cans, reducing habitable space, and reducing the exposure of pets to wildlife. Hazing techniques are also good ways to introduce behavioral changes in coyotes to reshape the way in which coyotes interact with human beings. Hazing techniques include making loud noises to frighten coyotes, spraying coyotes with water, throwing objects in the direction of but not directly at coyotes, and raising arms and waving hands to appear larger and intimidating. As coyotes are considered wildlife, local animal control officers have no authority to remove or trap them, this can only be done by a state-certified wildlife trapper. Trapping of coyotes is expensive and does not significantly reduce the number of coyotes over time, as coyotes quickly develop, reproduce when their numbers diminish. The city of Longdale does currently have, excuse me, does not currently have a coyote management plan, but we are reviewing the plans of neighboring communities and are looking for direction from the council on how you would like staff to proceed.
Well, I'm wondering, how do you manage them if you can't trap them? That, that's, I don't know, how do you do that if you can't trap them?
Sure, well, the plan would actually just be, uh, protocols that we would follow, leading up to and including trapping, which is actually, when you say trapping, it is, it is a lethal option, there's no, they're not re-released anywhere else, they have to be put down when trapped. So, but currently, we don't have any kind of guideline on that, so this would just be the introduction of a management plan that we present to, to the council, that we incorporate into our, our code.
Can I just make a comment? Because this appeared on Nextdoor, I don't know if any of you watched it this week, but it was in Longdale that there was a video at about one forty. but it was in Longdale that there was a video at about 149th Street that a coyote was running through, and sure enough, there was a city vehi, there was a city vehicle that was right there in present. Someone posted that the city would go ahead and euthanize if caught the coyote run, coyote run. I just think it needs to be really clear that the city has no jurisdiction to euthanize a coyote. They're protected by the state.
Right, so, yeah, and my guys wouldn't have the, the means to euthanize a coyote, or even trap one for that matter, so, um, uh, we, in having a coyote management plan that would include a, a component of educating the public, putting out, uh, information to the public on what they can do as homeowners and pet owners, um, also what they can do if they encounter a coyote. Uh, that incident on 149th, we, that was us, we were out chasing that coyote till, we got it out of the city streets, so I did, I did let other council members know that it asked about that, that we, we were there, so.
Yes, you are.
There was a second one, yes, later that day, so the, the sightings are a little more prevalent, uh, summertime is, uh, the breeding season was early in the year, so the, the pups are becoming older and they're becoming more active in hunting and learning to hunt, so, uh, the presence is going to be, uh, probably a little more active in the next few months.
I do have a question. Um, we chased them away from the city, and let's say we send it to Torrance, do we notify Torrance that the coyote is going...
That a coyote's on the way? Well, we, we could.
Well, you know, because it, it, we should be telling our neighboring city, whichever way the coyote goes. I'm not saying we, we chase them to Torrance, but if it goes to Hawthorne or Gardena, do we notify their...
We, 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 we don't, but again, this would be, this would be something we would put into the plan.
Because it, it would be nice that, you know, we notify the next city where the coyote is running.
Of course, yes. Again, we, we don't have, uh, any set plan right now, uh, my guys and I will haze them and get them to, to, and will warn the public, you know, when, when we would get ahead of the coyote and let people know if they're walking their dogs or walking their kids, "Hey, we're corralling a coyote, trying to get it this way, so go back in your homes." Um, but again, this is just our staff only, uh, if, if we were to introduce a plan, um, we would include a component for residents, and, and, and in my experience with this and working from previous cities, that had a lot of coyotes, much more than we do, um, hazing really only works if everybody collectively is hazing. If, if it's just my staff and I hazing, then that coyote only learns to be afraid of my staff, uh, not everybody else, so, uh, it really, we, you know, grandmothers and, and teenagers, they would all have to do their part in making it unhusp, un, uh, hospitable for coyotes in Longdale. I mean, securing trash cans, keeping your pets indoors, getting rid of excess food that we feed your pets, and, and picking up fruits that fall from trees, because these are all attractants for coyotes. So the plan would incorporate that everybody would have to, you know, play a role, you, you, you know, you wouldn't just call my staff and I, because that, you know, the coyotes would just learn to be scared of us.
So you know that coyote was coming eastbound, uh, family member lives on 149th and Englewood, and taped the coyote running eastbound from Englewood. So it probably came from the railroad tracks or, um, from Longdale High, somewhere in that vicinity.
We, we first became aware...
I'm saying Longdale.
Well, it was crossing the street, that's why he was probably hit by, by something, because he had a bad night.
Yeah, they, he had, he had a limp, we noticed he had a limp as well, so.
Hey, I live by a railroad track.
Yeah.
Well, be, be careful.
Anyway, it came by my, from my house.
So I did want to note that I did, uh, meet with, um, a council member from Rancho Pollo's Fair Days, and they said, they have a robust, I guess, because of where they live and where they're situated, they have a robust plan, and they're happy to, um, have us review it and get ideas, it's, you know, they, they said, they kind of blueprinted it, and I think Torrance and them work together, so they're already, um, dealing with that. And one thing I would like to see is, uh, maybe we can notate, um, I mean, this might change, but if, as far as I know, I think there's like a population in Al Camino, um, not Al Camino, um, Alondra Park, so perhaps maybe we can pinpoint like a map of where we're seeing, where we know there's populations, although that might change.
Yeah, I, I can, I can include all these things and include tracking them and find ways to kind of know where they're, they're nesting.
Thank you.
Very good. Yes.
Yeah, I think that would work, I, yeah, that's a good suggestion, I think that's to be a state or regional kind of decision.
Okay, so we look forward to the, um, hearing more about the, um, the coyote plan update. Thank you for that update.
Thanks, sir.
Let's move along to item seventeen, it's an update on commercial vehicles parked on Prairie Avenue.
Uh, yes, uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor and distinguished members of the city council, uh, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you again tonight. Um, in recent months, staff have received, had received complaints from Longdale residents living on Prairie Avenue concerning commercial vehicles parked on the east side of Prairie Avenue between 168th and Manhattan Beach Boulevard. The complaints range from noise from the semi trucks being left running, to food vendors stopping and setting up random curbside dining spots, to concerns that exhaust from diesel engines were causing pollution and creating a hazard to families living adjacent to this area. Prairie Avenue marks the east side border of the city of Longdale, and unfortunately, this area, the area in which these vehicles were being parked does not fall within the city limits. Additionally, the county side of the street does not forbid commercial parking on Prairie Avenue, and the only parking restriction is for certain time of day restrictions only enforceable on weekdays. Staff placed calls to county offices, but as commercial vehicles were only being parked there on weekends, there was no violation to enforce. At the suggestion of our city manager, staff created a warning notice advising that enforcement would begin by city staff for all violations of the noise ordinance and all other applicable violations. Weekend staff began placing these warning notices on windshields of the parked commercial vehicles. Since placing these warning notices on windshields, staff and LSD dep, LASD deputies have seen significantly less commercial veh, vehicle activity on Prairie Avenue. There was no significant costs associated with this action, but staff did want to make the city council aware of this complaint and update the council on how it was resolved. And I can answer any questions if there are any.
Okay, I'm glad that it's been resolved and addressed.
I'll make it quick. How come Manhattan has, Prairie and Manhattan going eastbound has no commercial parking and we can't get anything on Prairie?
Uh, I'm not sure where, where the border for, uh, going, you're saying going...
If you go east of Prairie on Manhattan, it has no commercial parking. Can we get the county to put no commercial parking on the Prairie side?
Well, we, we did speak to some, some members of, of county, uh, Public Works and also the engineering's off, engineering, engineering offices, as well as, uh, uh, the supervisors' representative, uh, the county supervisor's representative, um, but it would be their decision to, to, to make that a rule or not, not, not really ours. So the, the idea was that we would put these warnings on there to pretend we were going to enforce, but we really would have no authority to do so. But it worked as a bluff and it did get, uh, the trucks off the street, for now.
Mayor, council, the, the county's been somewhat reluctant to do any enforcement there, and so we, uh, we, we turned them into the sheriffs, and they put this advisory warning that we were going to turn them over to the county. We did meet with public work staff, and they said that, uh, they're reluctant to enforce anything other than with the noise of the freezer units and to keep an eye on it, but as of yet, they have not changed the no parking there.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting this report together. I, uh, know that the residents that live in that area are appreciating the fact that the nuisance is somewhat lessening. I think now it's just a matter of us staying on top of it and continuing to put them out when new ones arrive.
Yeah, warnings were, we attempted to put warnings out, uh, the past two weekends, and there was very few trucks to even warn, so they're already not parking there, so.
Very good. Okay, so that would be the update on commercial vehicles. Thank you for that update, and let's have the city managers report.
Uh, no report tonight.
No report tonight. We'll make a note of that. Um, items from the council members, let's hear from Councilmember Pat Kearney.
Uh, most of us attended the state of the city of Hawthorne, it was a great event, the mayor there put on a great event. I attended the city council on, on the LA County Sheriff's meeting, which both of us were there. It was on the twelfth at five thirty, I'm giving times to. I attended the Lobby Trust and Oversight Committee on seven thirteen at eleven o'clock. We had the ribbon cutting ceremony at, uh, Pollo Campero's on the fourteenth at nine AM, most of us attended.
Mm-hmm.
And then I attended the, uh, I'm going to say this, damn, so I'm going to say the Hawaiian Festival at Alondra Park on the sixteenth, and, uh, The Rock was there, one of the guys that played in, uh, Renegade, the Hawaiian guy was there, Shaved Eyes was great, the music was great, and you all missed it.
No, not everybody.
Okay, I'll pass it on.
Okay, very good. Councilwoman Forrest?
On June twenty-third, I had the South Bay Cities Council of Government Board of Directors meeting, uh, the budget was approved, um, and then on seven eleven, um, as previously mentioned, I had the homeless solutions subcommittee, I kind of made that name up because we didn't have a good name. I hope it's okay.
Solution?
So, uh, and then the Hawthorne State of the City address, um, and then on the twelfth, the sheriff's quarterly meeting. On July thirteenth, I did have a meeting with, um, I previously mentioned the, um, one of the council members from Rancho's Pollo's Fair Days, um, they're the new chair for the South Bay Cities Council of Government, so did want to meet and hear concerns Longdale had. Uh, I did bring up Metro and he definitely took notes on the stuff, so I'm hoping to gain some support there. Um, and then on the fourteenth, um, I am, we had the grand opening for, um, Pollo Campero for the, um, and, on our new restaurant, which, you know, I, I'm going to say that I, I liked it a lot better than a Pollo Loco's. You know, so like that really good food, I mean, different, um, food, genre of food, but it definitely really good. Um, and then I also attended, um, through the COG or the South Bay Cities Council of Government, had an innovation fund staff appreciation for the homeless services division and got to network with some people that were hoping can help us out. Um, and then on the fifteenth, I did have a, um, meeting with, um, Southern California Edison, um, team members are our rep regarding net metering, um, it's something that, um, it has to do with solar, so just to put it in basic terms, there are traditional electricity users pay to help with the infrastructure such as pole lines and all of that, and there's been this debate that people that own solar panels don't pay to help with the maintenance of those costs, um, amongst other things, so there, the Public Utilities Commission, they're looking at revising the way that it's, putting in some new implementation to kind of make sure it's fair and equitable and all that, so very interesting discussion, um, I'm really glad I, helped me understand it, but look on the radar because that's coming through, and we're hoping it helps relieve rates, um, for, for utility users. Um, and with that, I'll pass it along.
Thank you, Councilwoman Forrest.
I attended the homeless solution standing committee meeting. I also attended the Hawthorne State of the Union, um, was here at the special council meeting with, uh, the sheriff department, attended Pollo Campero ribbon cutting, they're located at one six six zero six Hawthorne Boulevard, and yes, I like that, their chicken better than Pollo Loco. Um, I also attended the South Bay COG event, recognizing Nancy Wilcox and the other PATH volunteers. Um, I did go to the Ho'ala Leah Hawaiian Festival, which is one of the largest Hawaiian festivals in Southern California. It was held at, at Alondra Park, had lots of fun, lots of good food, um, did some shopping too, which was great. Um, I have a couple of things, um, for next meeting, if I could, if someone could give us an update on the YAC program. I've noticed we've been canceling their, um, meetings, so if the program has been, is still in the effect or if it's gone. Um, also, the youth center, um, are we including the YAC committee or the YAC kids? Um, the, I need, I would like to know the status of the parks contract, I believe it's, our parks, uh, contract is over, if not this month, next month. Um, also, um, I would like to, I believe it's time to do a review on our city manager. Uh, we had spoken about doing it a quarterly, so if we could schedule that. Um, driving around the city, I noticed that we still have the Longdale Beach bus signs. Um, are we going to remove them since we don't have Longdale Beach, or are we going to put something over it so that, you know, our citizens are not standing waiting for the bus? Um, also, I would like to thank Mike and staff for receiving the two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar TAP grant that he received, uh, I believe last week. And then how do we control if a business employee is parking on a residential, uh, street? Um, there's, there's certain businesses that are using their parking spaces for, for example, McAutoshop, is using their employee parking spaces for their, uh, repair cars, but the employees are parking on the street on a residential area. Um, how do we control that? Is there, uh, I don't know, that was a question from, from a citizen. So if we could...
We can, I don't know if we can enforce that, if it's public parking?
Yeah.
I don't think we can enforce it, but we could look into the codes and verify if they have enough parking on their side. Some of the older businesses here in Longdale are illegal, non-conforming, don't meet parking requirements.
Okay, thank you. That will be all, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, approach him.
My list is a whole lot shorter because I wasn't as active as you guys. On the twenty-second of June, I did attend a Zoom on the state of homelessness that was a pretty good speaker, and then I took a little COVID vacation, so to speak, because I was exposed to COVID, I chose to shelter in my hole and not go to the many things that the rest of you got to go to. Um, one thing I did want to bring up, about July seventh, we received, uh, an email in regards to a lobbyist that represents cities both in the state and in Washington DC. And this gentleman I happened to meet, um, and I had a pretty good conversation with him in regards to, now, I'm going to back up a little bit, Longdale previously has had a lobbyist that only worked in the federal, uh, arena. This gentleman works in both. My ears are peaked with him, and I would like to know how my co-council members feel about this, on possibly hiring him, and the reason of my interest is Metro and the Green Line. I think that Longdale needs a seat at the table, and I'm suspicious that he could help us get not just for our local represent, or our, the people that represent us at the federal and the state level, but also to their constituents to help start getting them to help Longdale in our argument and our fuss with Metro. And I would be interested in knowing how my co-council feels about possibly bringing on again a lobbyist, not so much for writing grants and looking for money at the state and federal level, but looking for the bigger things that are impacting our community for the next hundred years. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, I just added twenty items to my list to make sure I'm keeping pace, right? I'm just laughing. I did attend the, um, the ribbon cutting, this not in, in any necessary order, um, Pollo Campero, and let me tell you, the chicken there, the fried chicken in particular is outstanding, um, I, I had the opportunity to actually visit one in, um, LA, can't remember where, it was somewhere in LA, that was like months ago, and so I already knew I was in for, you know, a, a treat, and that the residents would be in for a treat, uh, for this new family-owned, um, restaurant that we welcomed, um, to the city of Longdale through the ribbon cutting. And since then, I think I've been there, is it three or four times? I was actually kind of embarrassed because I was in there today and the, um, I guess he's the manager, and he wasn't there the, the other times, I, he said, "You, you was in here yesterday, right?" So I acted like I was confused, like, no, I, I, I think that was yes, I think that was the day before yesterday. Tried to throw him off the track a little bit, right? But he... But he insisted that, no, you was in here yesterday. I'm like, okay, yeah, you got me. And, um, this time I took my daughter, um, as well, but, um, if you get an opportunity, stop by there and, um, to have some really good food and support our our newest, um, establishment here in in Longdale. Um, I did attend also the the State of the City, um, address from, um, um, Alice Vargas, the mayor of, um, the city of, um, Hawthorne. That was nice. And of course, I attended the, um, the Sheriff's Quarterly, uh, Meeting. And I also had the opportunity to greet the seniors, um, today as they return to the senior lunch program, which is going to be on, um, for now, Mondays and Fridays. Um, same same time, same senior time. Um, lunch for seniors, what, what, nine thirty? No, I I actually, I'm just kidding. Actually, it was about eleven thirty, eleven thirty, twelve, whatever, for the senior lunch program. So I was glad to see, um, the seniors, some I hadn't seen since the pandemic, you know, some of them. And so I was glad to see, um, and they were really happy to be, um, back at the community center. And, um, that's all I have. I scratched the other twenty items right on here.
Did you ever check in anymore?
No, just at the, I did. It was all chicken all the time. Pollo Campero's. Yeah, that's all chicken all the time. Right. And that was it. Okay, so that's it for me. All right. Well, if we're up to it, we still have a closed session.
Let's get it done.
That we can just, yeah, that's, I would suggest, too, yeah. So what we'll do, we will recess and we will have a, uh, a closed session. I'm going to ask the city attorney to give the provision of a closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is existing litigation under Government Code Section 54956.9D1 uh, for the matter entitled Rancho Palos Verdes v. Bontem. Thank you.
Thank you. We will recess to closed session. Okay, we have returned from closed session. I'm going to ask the city attorney to give the report of the closed session.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council was briefed on the item of exi- of existing litigation, and no reportable action was taken this evening. That's my report.
All righty. Okay, it's adjournment time. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council would be held at 6:30 PM on Monday, August the first, twenty twenty-two, and these council chambers is now ten thirty-six, and this meeting is adjourned.